Our live streaming now and we are all live and I can hear and see everyone.
All right, awesome. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Tuesday, February ninth meeting of the Carrow Town Council. We're gonna, we're starting here at six thirty, a little early this evening, and we'll start out Kathy with our role call. Are you now Kathy? Just have to unmute yourself.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, great, thanks. All right, with our roll call, thank you all for being here. Mayor Lydia Lavelle.
Present.
Councilmember and Mayor Pro Tem Barbara Fushi.
Present.
Councilmember Jacqueline Gist.
Present.
Councilmember Randy Haven O'Donnell.
Right here.
Councilmember Susan Romaine.
Present.
Councilmember Damon Siles.
Present.
And Councilmember Sammy Slade.
Present.
All right, thank you.
All right, great, thank you. Thanks Kathy. So, so we're starting out this evening having a meeting with our legislative delegation as we usually do each year in the, in the spring, springtime or late winter, I guess, depending on what year it is. We really appreciate y'all taking a little time to be with us tonight. We've, we've allotted around forty-five minutes just to kind of talk, talk with you a little. And we want to hear from you, like some observations you might have for us. And we have a, you know, list of our legislative priorities that we have put together. Some familiar items on there, a couple I think we want to highlight tonight, just to make sure you're aware of. But we really, really want to thank Representative Ensco, Representative Meyer, and Senator Fushi for taking time out of their busy lives to be with us this evening. We do appreciate it. So I guess, Councilmembers, maybe before we ask any questions that we have, hopefully, y'all have gotten a chance, Verla, Greg, Val, to kind of look over our list of priorities. And then I guess, you know, respond to any of those if you would, but I know that I think we're interested also in just hearing from you all, just your perspectives thus far in this session, how things might be proceeding or not, or any observations that you can give us. As you know, we have resumed our Metro Mayor's Coalition meetings and we have, you know, the letters from the league every Friday. So we're kind of aware of a lot of the, some of what's going on and, you know, a lot of the deadlines coming up, but would appreciate hearing from, from any or all of you about any remarks or observations that you want to make to us.
Well, thanks for having us. It's a pleasure to be here and to see, see everyone and to hear everyone. So I, I, we're gonna be doing COVID budget with leftover money from the COVID, federal COVID money that came down, and then also the emergency budget. And then the governor's also working on his proposed budget for the, for the next term. So that'll be high on the priority list. I think the big issue with the budget is, is real simple. We don't have enough money. We've got a lot of money this year. We've got a lot of money left over, but so we can fund things this year and I don't know whether we'll get any recurring, how many, how much recurring improvements we'll get. We've got a lot of places that really need recurring improvements right now. So, but I think the education is really a high priority. Healthcare is a really high priority. I don't believe we will get Medicaid expansion. The governor has a healthcare group pulled together to look at option, making improvements, and that's bipartisan, making improvements without making any major, without doing Medicaid expansion. So it'd be lots of little bills. And I think there's, we also expect some really good legislation to come out of the Governor's Crime Commission. The big report that he had. So I'll just, I think it'll be a difficult, I think it'll be a difficult session. I don't see that, that, that we've got any change in priorities from either side. I think that keeping the, I expect another, I would not be surprised to have another effort to make another tax cut this year. I just, I think that's one of their high priorities, reduce taxes, cut the size of government, eliminate as much government as you can eliminate. And so, you know, I think our challenge is still to focus on taking back seats. That's, and I think on the campaign side that we are starting earlier, recruiting, getting better organized, getting more organized. Representative Reeves has been elected our leader in this year, and he's doing a really good job organizing us and getting us all lined up to do different jobs. And, and, and that is working. People are actually doing that. And so the people at the top are actually holding us accountable. So I think that's, that's good. That's sort of a brief overview across the top. That's I'll let other people add more details.
Great, great. Thank you. Thanks Verla. Val or Greg, whoever wants to go next?
I'll go. Thank you all for having us. It's always good to be among friends and with people whom we share goals and ideals. I don't know that I could add a lot to what Representative Ensco has said. I will say that it's an, it's an eerie kind of feel in the legislature. And I think a lot of that has to do with not knowing really the direction in which we're going. This time of the session, there's not a whole lot going on that you can lay hands to. You know that conversations are being held. You know that ideals are being put into draft legislation. But from the other side, everything is kind of mum. I will say that to Verla's point about the direction that we may be going as it relates to reduced taxes with the kind of legislation that will be more beneficial to businesses and not that we're opposed to that because we know that businesses, particularly small businesses and women-owned and minority-owned businesses have suffered over the last year. But I think that, that type of concentration on businesses that neglect the needs of the average citizen who has lost his or her job, or those persons who are struggling to pay their mortgages or their rents, or to make their car payments, or who are struggling to teach their children at home. I don't know that this legislative session beyond appropriating funds from the federal government will address those needs specifically. Because on the other side, it seems to me that the focus is bringing assistance to the business community. Where I believe, as the governor believes, that until we can get our students back in school full-time, which should include vaccination of teachers and other school personnel, it's going to be hard for us to recapture what we need for the business community. I think we know that this session, we will be involved at some point in redistricting, but we are sure that that's not going to happen until most likely a special session later on in the year. So as Representative Ensco said, I think most of our efforts will be certainly on the budget and understanding that we won't have enough money, that the fact that we have unreserved ability to appropriate some one-time funding will help in some way, but there will still be funding needs out there as they relate to education, as they relate to providing access to healthcare. And I think we'll see better efforts to extend broadband in the far reaches of the state. But other than that, I don't know that there's more than I can say, and I will stop so that Representative Meyer can add on to anything that we missed. But thank you for the opportunity again.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Greg?
Thanks, Representatives Go and Senator Fushi, and thank you to the board for having us back as always. I'll just add this, that Governor Cooper rolled out a proposal for emergency COVID relief budget last week, and as Representative Ensco said, we'll be working on some type of assistance package in the next few weeks. I'm sure there will be lots of negotiations about exactly how to spend the money and how much money to go to anything, but what we and the House Democrats have decided to focus on is five categories of people that we'll be advocating for. The first group being people who get sick and their healthcare workers, the second one being small businesses and their employees, third being people unemployed and looking for work, the fourth being students and their educators, and the fifth being people hit with hunger and housing needs. And that's lots of work to do, and hopefully we can advocate for some good assistance for people in all five of those groups.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Let me, I want to ask a quick question, and then I think I want to turn it over to Sammy, because Sammy, I want to, I want you to bring up, if you don't mind, that Awassa matter that we talked about. But my question, I guess, for you three is, are you all operating just entirely remotely now, or are the three of you kind of going in at different times? Or how is, how is the business of the General Assembly kind of going on right now?
I go in every day. I'm still dressed from being there today. And we have votes today on the floor, and we cannot vote remotely.
Yeah, okay. I thought so.
I'm, I'm remote. I get my second shot this Friday, and then I'll probably start going over.
Okay, yeah, interesting.
I worked in a hoodie today, but I'm gonna wear a suit and go in tomorrow. We have both possibilities.
Interesting. Okay, yeah, awesome. All right, let's see. Sammy, would you go ahead?
Yes, thank you, Lydia. Good to see all of you, Senator Fushi, Representative Ensco, and Representative Meyer. You know, we're not very Carrow-like in our asks in recognition of the situation of, of who's in control of the General Assembly right now. But one, one item that maybe, there may be appetite. Honestly, I don't really know where this lands is Awassa's in the midst of doing their, their long-term water planning. It's, it's like a ten-year plan. And one of the top-ranking water source that they've identified is direct potable water reuse. And the only negative thing that's, the negative aspect of it is that it's currently not legal in North Carolina. It is, it is a technology that's being used in other states and safely. And so they're intending to lobby, and so we, I figured that, and the council figured it would be worth putting that on your radar to work with Awassa to get that, that going. And I don't know if, if Kathy was able to forward to you the table, but I, there's a table that kind of breaks it down. The other aspect of this technology is that it is way better than everything else in terms of climate action in that it doesn't require as much pumping as the other alternative that is highest ranking, which is drawing water from Jordan Lake. So I just wanted y'all to know about it, or learn whether you've been, whether you've heard about it, and, and get a sense as to what degree you feel there may be appetite from your colleagues on the opposite side of the aisle to, to look at making this legal in North Carolina.
I, I think one thing you could do is, is try to influence other water authorities around the state. I don't actually know how many there are, but you might find some in Republican districts. And that would be a good way to, if you can get a couple of Republicans on board with it, that'd be a good way to get a bipartisan effort going.
I agree. I, I think that particularly with a statewide effort, this would have to be most likely a public bill. And so any assistance, any support you can get from other areas of the state that use utilities, or authorities rather, to join in the effort would move it a little further down the road.
So Sammy, would this apply to regular municipal water as well as authorities?
I'm not clear about those nuances. All I do know is that Awassa has identified the need to kind of organize with, with their other water providers throughout the state, like y'all are saying. So basically organize and reach out to their representatives in their districts and, and then make it happen that way. So Awassa's on, on, on that track.
Can I ask a question? What is the impetus for this? Is it, is it less expensive? Was it better for the climate?
Well, they have a bunch of metrics identifying. It's the cost, it's better for the climate, it is less, less crossings of streams for piping water. There's a plethora of reasons, and it's one of the highest ranking of various alternatives that they've identified. And I could forward you the, the link and the page so you can have it. And they've done a really good job at breaking down a matrix that shows kind of the benefits of this alternative versus others.
I would pick out the alternatives like cost that were attract Republicans to focus on.
Great, okay. Thank you, Sammy. So we'll get that. Go ahead, Greg.
Can I say one more thing? If, if you have a specific piece of statute that you want, that you think that a change needs to be made, would you just go ahead and send that to us? And I talk regularly with the Chair of our Public Utilities and Energy Committee, John Zoka, and I'd be happy to at least run it by him and see what he thinks about it.
I'll, I'll follow up with Awassa and see whether they have something like that, or at a, at a minimum, an alternative from another state that, that may be something to go by. Thanks, Greg.
Great. All right. Thank, thank you, Sammy. Just, I, I have one other item I'm gonna bring up in a little bit, but I wanted to open the floor to other council members who have one of the items perhaps on our list that we want to make sure, kind of we can emphasize. Damon?
This is one that I know. Thanks, thanks to all three of you for being here. Of course, it's always good to see you, whether or not we're in person. I know that you already have on your radar one of the priorities we've listed, which is the reinstatement of the State Maintenance Assistance Program funding in the transportation budget. And, you know, sound like a broken record because we had to deal with this in 2019, of course, and then last year. But it's a critical source of funding for urban transit systems like Chapel Hill Transit, which is the second largest transit system in the state. But it's, it's, it's important to other urban transit systems around the state too. Charlotte, you know, I think in the first time this happened, lost millions of dollars because of the cut of that from their budget. Chapel Hill Transit, I think, lost almost a million dollars from its budget. That's hard to replace in a transit system like Chapel Hills. And, and sort of along the lines of finding opportunities to work with your colleagues on the other side of the aisle, I think that the other, the other item that has been cut, similar to the State Maintenance Assistance Program, is the Rural Operating Assistance Program, or ROP. It similarly provides operating assistance to transit systems, but in rural parts of the state. And so that needs to be reinstated as well. As I think you know, the North Carolina Public Transportation Association has made this one of their top priorities for this legislative session and is doing some lobbying around that. But I think anything you can do to reinstate both of those programs at their previous fiscal year levels would be very helpful. Otherwise, we're going to find ourselves having to use essentially relief funding to fill the gap when we really ought to be using relief funding to pay for the additional expenses of addressing pandemic-related expenses like safety on buses and protecting employees and customers and so on. So I appreciate any work done to do on that.
So if you could send us the amount for both of those programs, the governor's, governor has asked for us to give him proposals that he would put in his budget proposal, which may not, that won't, that won't go anywhere, but that would get it public.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks Verla. I will, I actually can send you the exact dollar amounts that they're asking for. They're really just looking to reinstate the previous amount that was fully funded in the previous budget, but then they cut, of course, because of NCDOT's budget woes among, and of course, the pandemic hitting. So I'll send you the exact dollar amounts for both of those programs.
Thanks.
Thanks, Damon. Okay, other council members, something we want to highlight, bring up. Let me say this, just to our delegation while you're here, and Mr. Manager might want to chime in on this, I don't know, but we are, as a local government, we're, we're not as bad off as we could be. Okay, we had a, we got a financial picture from the manager last Tuesday, and our, our property taxes have remained pretty stable. Our sales tax money has gone up a little bit. We, of course, don't have any, don't have our tourism dollars, which come through our hotel, you know, haven't come to us. Some of our permitting fees, some of our fees we collect through recreation and parks events, we haven't gotten those monies. But even though, and we've really toe the line with our budget in terms of freezing positions, putting off some kind of expenditures because we weren't sure what was going to happen over the course of this year. But we've been, at least as far as the town goes, holding pretty steady. Now, as you know, you know, our, our, our small businesses, our restaurants, our nonprofits are, you know, it's just horrific. It's been horrific. And, you know, we've, over the course of the months since COVID, right after COVID last year, we, you know, issued out a lot of money through our Human Services Commission, you know, just emergency COVID, COVID loans and grants, really, to a lot of businesses to kind of keep them going until they can get the paycheck protection monies, or whatever other grants or things that they could get. We worked to try to make it easier for them to operate in a different way, you know, be able to serve food outdoors, be able to put up tables, however they wanted, put up signage how they wanted. Really, essentially, whatever they asked us, we tried to do for them, you know, to, if it's within our reason, within our ability, our power, while we're still under a state of declaration, a mercy declaration. And so I, I guess, you know, that, that kind of emphasis, I mean, that really kind of remains, I think, between that and all the other items that our Human Services Department is working with, you know, the folks that are not able to pay their rent, the folks that are hardly able to get by, the folks that are homeless. I mean, it's, we've been going overtime with all of that, and we just kind of hope that that's gonna ease up a little here, right, over the, over 2021. But any, anything, I know one of our priorities, funding assistance to fill revenue losses associated with COVID-19 pandemic, it's, it's not so much for our needs, although Mr. Manager probably hit me for saying that, but it's for the needs of our people, or the people that live in our town. It's just, it's really been so, so painful all these months. And I don't know if any council members have anything you want to add to that, or, and I know I'm not saying anything y'all don't know, but it's, you know, just right here on the ground. Even, even things like hearing from our, hearing from our residents, our citizens, engagement, just trying to figure out how to, how to understand how they're hurting, understand what's going on with them. You know, we meet virtually like this every Tuesday, and there are some And there are some people that, you know, we just haven't seen in the in a year, really, because it's so difficult and different, this environment that we're in. So I don't know if anyone has a response to that, or if you want to want to chime in on anything here. Damon?
Yeah, I just add to that. I mean, I think there's been, as you all know, a lot of chatter over the last several months about the Rainy Day Fund and the fact that it it seems to just be sitting there while it's raining very heavily on all of us and including here in Carboro. I know that you're all, all three of you in a really difficult position in the Journal Assembly politically. I'm just wondering, what is the what is the appetite among the Republican leadership to to help out the people of North Carolina, you know, to to do things with the Rainy Day Fund that will actually support people? Sounds like there's not much, but any glimmers of hope?
I think they're artists. Go ahead.
Speak to that earlier. There, go ahead, Verla.
Well, I've heard the speaker quoted as saying that they can't touch the Rainy Day Fund. Is that right? Is that what you're hearing on your side of the aisle? Or the chamber? Yeah.
Absolutely.
What's it for?
For a really big emergency.
Like this one is not.
Like climate. It's for bragging.
I hear bells ringing. The bell's ringing.
Well, we we were fortunate to get a pretty good CDBG COVID grant of 900,000 a few weeks ago from to get through, through the governor's office to go for evictions and and folks that have housing needs. But I know the National Conference of Mayors has been working really hard and Metro Mayors, of course, on really hoping that this latest round from the federal government will include monies that go to state and local government. And you know, the latest word is that perhaps some of it will actually even go, there'll be some monies going directly to local governments, I think of 50,000 or less. But half to the, but half those monies to the state and half of those monies to local governments. I I don't, I haven't dug in enough, it enough to know if that half that goes to the state goes to the governor and the legislature, or because of the legislature, or how it does. Have you all heard, I probably haven't heard anything about that, how how monies like that, if if they came through the federal government, how they would kind of come in through the process?
Unless something changes, that money is appropriated by the legislature.
But if the federal government directed it to
to those large counties or cities, but for the most part, you know, those large counties and those large cities generally have been getting their allocations directly. The rest of those funds have been passed through to be appropriated by the General Assembly. Correct me if I'm wrong. But I would say that in in the governor's proposal for spending some of those unreserved funds, I think it was just under 700 million. There was like 4.5 million dollars in there for rental and housing assistance. So, you know, again, that has to be approved by the legislature, but certainly it is something that can be and hopefully will be negotiated.
I have a question, but it's separate.
Sure. Yeah, go ahead, Randy.
You ready for me to just, I want to take it in another direction for a minute. I just want to ask of our legislators, how well poised do you think we are to take advantage of the economic shift towards renewable energy industry in North Carolina? There seems to be with the Biden-Harris administration that they're going to start to move in that direction. And I I just want to get a sense whether or not you feel that the legislature in North Carolina will help to move economy towards developing the industries?
I I feel more optimistic about that than I do about some other things because there's so much vested business interest in North Carolina related to renewable energy. There's a lot of chatter right now about what kind of legislation Duke Energy wants to have this year, some of which could be good for renewables overall, although it may not be good for some of our renewable producers and providers. I I think there, I I think that's an area of policy that's likely to see pretty significant change over the next two to four years because the federal action on it will probably really push us to make some changes. And we do have some Republican partners that are pretty good on renewables. There are also some who are pretty bad on it. So it is usually some type of inadequate deal that gets done on any renewables legislation. I'm more worried about transportation policy related to climate. I I think that by if the Biden administration pushes anything that's positive transportation, we don't have very good leadership on that here. And we don't, I mean, even in, I think, in the governor's administration, I don't think we have the right leadership if you want a good climate-based transportation policy.
Thank you. Thanks for that, Greg.
Conversation. I just want to follow up and say there's a lot of conversation about EV stations and EV vehicles. And of course, North Carolina is well poised to take it, take a slice out of that industry and and work with it. I I'm just hoping that that folks in North Carolina are going to recognize that. Additionally, Greg, I would hope that the community college system will be part of the conversation about renewable energies and training and certifications. Thanks.
I I also think that that that, excuse me, that car manufacturers and other other producers are going to, like, car manufacturers are going to be setting their own goals. And I and I think that some of the power companies are stepping up better. So when you see that kind of change, it's it feels a little bit more like momentum when the power companies actually talk about how they're going to adapt.
Thanks, Randy. Thank you. Thank you, Verla. Let's go to Jackie.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here tonight. I really appreciate it. There's I I wanted to know how the legislature has on its radar screen and how it's addressing the tremendous shift in the workforce that's occurring as we're all sitting in in our living rooms. And I see it impacting in in two ways. One, in the in the development world, that the the demand for office space is is greatly shifting, if not going away, because so many people are working at home. And we're also experiencing what's called digital nomads who who are moving here from places that no longer have offices because we're we're more affordable. But the other piece of that is that as the workforce is shifting, and many of us are able to work at home, people who who are out of work or who have lost jobs or whose jobs have been downsized, they're going to have a harder time reentering this new workforce that's based at at home. And so we need to relook at workforce development, whether it's through the work that our Department of Labor does or the work that that we're doing in schools. I know that's kind of a big picture. But I think that the shift in where people and how people are working is increasing the is increasing, we're going to find when when we wake up and come out of our caves, that the change is going to include increasing the the divide between different income groups. And people who are privileged to be able to work at home, to have jobs that can work at home and office buildings, because losing office space doesn't just mean losing the people who work in that office space. It also means people who build that office space, who maintain that office space, who all the things that that surround that. I know that that's a a high-up thing, but I think it needs to be on our radar screen, both when we're looking at economic development and how we're trying to to bring new businesses in. New businesses aren't going to want to come in, not in the way that they used to, because their employees can stay where they're, where they are. Does that ring a bell to to you? I wanted to make sure that the shift is part of the conversation that that's happening in in the legislature.
I haven't heard that talk at legislature, but I I I hear it a lot, a lot around.
We need to plan for that, both in our education and our economic development and our recruitment of businesses to come to North Carolina, that that really has to be part of of that equation.
Yeah, thank you for reading it out.
Thank you, Jackie. Appreciate it. Let's go to Susan.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks so much for for being here. I know how busy you are and thanks for carving out time. I'm going to follow up with Jackie's workforce question, and I had a question about the minimum wage. So, you know, during the pandemic, we've been hearing lots of praises for our essential workers, but there still hasn't been a raise. And there's been some talk at the federal level that we may lift the minimum wage to $15 by 2025. It's still uncertain if there's the votes there. So if we don't get that at the federal level, I'm just curious what the appetite would be like in the General Assembly for any kind of raise in the minimum wage, even something phased in gradually. I know it's hard during a pandemic. I know it's hard when the small business community is already very fragile. But it's also been 11 years, and there does seem to be more and more discussion about lifting the minimum wage. So I'm just kind of curious what the feel for that, what the appetite would be like in the General Assembly.
Democrats would be in favor of it.
The appetite is with this group.
And that's kind, you don't see any bipartisan support for it?
Absolutely none. In the Senate chamber.
I think there are, there are, we have a group of moderates on the House side, and I think they probably would support, not certainly not going to 15, but I don't know that they'd vote for it. They vote as a group. It's it's rare that they have anybody split off.
This is about where we are in Congress, too.
They would be smart if they would, in the election year, if they would raise the minimum wage just by $2, $2 an hour. You know, that would be, I think they'd they'd get a lot of mileage out of that.
I'm sorry. I guess it might be helpful for you all to query the State Chamber. Because my my conversations with people from the State Chamber is like gloom and doom should the state raise the minimum because of what they say would happen to jobs if that is the case. And maybe I'm hearing something that others are not hearing. But in all the conversations I have with my colleagues on the other side of the aisle, and even with folk from the State Chamber who from time to time visit me, they're always on me about my support for raising the minimum because they say that it's a job killer. So because they have the ear of the leadership, as as Verla said, you're not going to find many Republicans who are going to splinter off and vote for an initiative such as that. And I think that many of you know that I have, along with others, introduced legislation to indeed raise the minimum. And those bills never get out of committee. So I haven't heard any sentiment from anybody that would suggest that there is a different sentiment in the General Assembly.
I think there's a, was a federal budget office, I think, estimated that 900,000 people would be improved.
Lifted out of poverty.
Move into a living wage, but 1.4 or 5 million people would actually lose their job.
And I think it also sort, you know, one of my understanding is it's like everything in public policy. It's, you know, what report you want to turn to and and that CBO report, I think, has gotten, you know, the the folks who disagree with it say they picked an unusual group of studies in order to make that conclusion. So just as you can find a report that says, yes, you kill jobs, you can also find a report that says, no, actually, I'm putting this money into, you know, lower-wage workers, they're going to go out into the community, they're going to spend it right away. And it's going to be a great stimulant, and it's actually going to create jobs. So it sounds like that that argument's not getting shared enough, and it needs to be more in the General Assembly in terms of the constituents. Thank you all.
All right. Thank you. One other, one last item I wanted to bring up. We've got just a couple more minutes here. Oh, let's go to Barbara first. Go ahead.
Hello, hello, hello to our legislative delegation. It's good to see all of you. My question's got answered early on about the funding assistance to fill the revenue losses in the broadband. I think it was Senator, maybe it was Senator Fushi that answered the question about the broadband. Is that is that anything that's going to be like a sweeping change or moving away from what we currently have now is is or just how much money and effort is is being poured into that, considering, you know, how we're really relying on it for remote learning as well as work. And it may go beyond the pandemic. You know, as things kind of switch up and and move, like Councilmember Gis was talking about. So I didn't know if anybody else had anything else to say about the the broadband. Other than what I think Senator Fushi, I think she commented.
I I I just would say that it's a problem in rural areas, and we have more Republicans that are elected in rural areas. So it's got good, strong Republican support. I think I don't know how much they'll put into it.
I I think I can send to you the most up-to-date maps of where rural broadband is going to get covered through a combination of federal and state grants. There's a pretty big chunk of areas of North Carolina that's going to be covered over the next six years. But there's two problems. One is that's a six-year plan, and people need rural broadband like today. And it's not clear what can be done to speed that up besides spending a whole lot more money, which maybe is what we have to do. And then the second problem is that it's pretty impressive what's on the what's on the map already, but there's still, you'll look at it and you'll see like there's huge chunks of areas that are not included. And so this is a multi-billion dollar problem and a multi-year problem that we should have started addressing in earnest 10 years ago, and obviously, we haven't. And so we're kind of stuck. The one other possibility that could be a potential game changer would be an evolving technology. And like right now, there's a lot of wireless broadband that's being deployed around the state, including here in Orange County. But it's really an imperfect technology, and we'll have a hard time keeping up with the evolution of broadband speeds over time. SpaceX has a technology that they're piloting in Southern Canada and the Northern United States right now. That's a low-altitude satellite technology that's supposed to be about equivalent to at-home broadband for most consumers right now and far superior to any other satellite technology and would help us in areas of North Carolina, like the mountains, where it's really hard to do even wireless broadband. But that's just in a pilot phase, and it's not really clear how long it'll take for them to demonstrate the model or to be able to expand it over the entire United States. It requires, they put up 750 satellites at a time from their rockets. And so it requires thousands of satellites to be able to make it work. And it's a sole provider, you know, so there's not really any market competition for it if that's the only option that's out there. So we don't have a great solution. But I would, you know, affirm what my colleague said, that I do think it's something that Republicans are finally taking seriously. And if they're willing to spend some money on it, then we should spend some money on it.
Thank you, Representative Meyer. And and if you would just share.
That's the good news, Councilwoman Fushi. That's the good.
Thank you, Senator Fushi. And Representative Meyer, if you would share the maps and that information that you were talking about with us or with the town clerk, that would be great. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. That was, that was really helpful. I'm gonna, I'm gonna wind things up here. I had one, or two small things, but I'll work them through to you all in another way. But I want to, I want to kind of just remind But I wanna, I wanna kind of just remind the delegation that, that we're always happy to provide stories, statistics, information back to you. You know, you have a direct hotline to Kathy about anything that you might see or want to get information from us about. Those Metro Mayor's calls every Friday are really helpful in terms of us, you know, getting to kind of touch base with the mayors across the state about just kind of common themes and concerns. We know there's gonna be some bits of legislation coming this spring that we don't know what, what it's gonna look like yet. But once it's unveiled, we might need to react quickly or swiftly to just kind of get you our, our thoughts and our input on those. Kathy, do you have any, anything you want to add to this conversation?
No, thank you. I just appreciate all of you being here, and thank you for your time and your excellent communication, as always. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, I mean, that, that is one thing I know, y'all, when I'm on those, these statewide kind of calls, we are so fortunate in our county to have, I mean, they'll say things like, try to meet your legislator, like, meet them, like, meet us so they know who you are, right? And you know who all of us are, and you talk to us all the time. And so we're really, really fortunate to have good lines of communication among all of our electeds, and then especially with you all. So we really appreciate you being here tonight. So I don't know if, if any of you have any other comments you want to make, Verla?
Oh, just, I was just saying, thanks for having us. These are, these meetings are really important. I mean, I've learned a lot from you, so that's been helpful to me.
Great, great. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you to you and Greg and Val for being here. We, we really appreciate it, but we're gonna let you go get your dinner or whatever else you need to do this evening.
Thank you.
Take care. Okay, that was pretty awesome, interesting, efficient. All right, we're gonna start off with our poetry reading. And we have, remember, this is Black History Month, and so we have guest poetry readers this month with us. And I know tonight, one of our readers is Diane Robertson. Diane Hayes, good to see you. And we also have, we also have Kendall Little here with us also, from Lidl, with the YAB, with Youth Advisory Board. So each of them are going to read poems for us to kind of kick off the, the more formal, I guess, part of our meeting. So I saw you first, Diane, so why don't you go ahead and, and feel free to go ahead and read yours. And after you go, then we'll have Kendall go.
Okay, well, first of all, thank you for having me. You know, it's an honor to be here with you this evening and share acknowledgement of Black History Month with my town representatives. I'm also grateful because the task took me down a path to decide who to read tonight. And there is a long list of worthy poets. And I want to speak the names of a few of them for the occasion. Frederick Douglass, Langston Hughes, James Weldon Johnson, Lawrence Dunbar, Phyllis Wheatley, Wendellin Brooks, Nikki Giovanni, Countee Cullen, Claudia Rankine, Audra Lord, Maya Angelou, Elizabeth Alexander, Natasha Trethewey, Alice Walker, James Baldwin, Toni Morrison, Tupac Shakur, Amanda Gorman, our own Jackie Shelton Green. And yesterday, in my query, I met Yusef Kumanyaka and Kevin Young Brown. Last week, you heard Amiri Bakara. And I hope someone will read another special local poet, George Moses Horton. But tonight, I chose Pauli Murray, a civil rights activist, pioneering feminist, labor organizer, lawyer, Episcopal priest, and a writer of nonfiction, memoir, and poetry, who became a friend to Eleanor Roosevelt during the presidency of FDR. She met Mrs. Roosevelt 10 years before the incident of the summer riots of 1943, which is the subject of this poem. I selected the poet and the poem for several reasons. Pauli Murray's close association to our community, being raised in Durham, her kinship to enslavers who lived in Orange County and worshiped down the road at Chapel of the Cross, the similarity to the theme of the poem for our time, and not least, how it illustrates an enduring quality for her character, speaking truth to power, even if that person was the President of the United States. In 1938, she wrote a letter to FDR prompted by a speech he had given praising the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill for its commitment to social progress at the same time that she had been denied admission to the graduate school at UNC for her race. In 1943, she had another opportunity to speak to President Roosevelt for his milquetoast response to the events of that summer. I think today, we might say she was trolling him. Mr. Roosevelt Regrets. Detroit Riot, 1943, by Pauli Murray. Upon reading PM Newspaper's account of Mr. Roosevelt's statement on the race-relation clashes, I share your feeling that the recent outbreaks of violence in widely spread parts of the country endanger our national unity and comfort our enemies. I am sure that every American regrets this. What did you get, black boy, when they knocked you down in the gutter? And they kicked your teeth out? And they broke your skull with clubs? And they bashed your stomach in? What did you get when the police shot you in the back? And they chained you to the beds while you wiped the blood off? What did you get when you cried out to the top man? When you called on the man next to God? So you thought? And asked him to speak out to save you? What did the top man say, black boy? Mr. Roosevelt Regrets. Thank you.
Wow, you know, Diane, thank you so much for that. I, I kept, I was waiting to see what name you were gonna say, and I, Pauli Murray. What an awesome choice, because I think of all those other things, really, when I think of her not, not poetry. So that was, that was awesome. In fact, there was a, I saw in the paper, there's a documentary that won a Sundance, I think, this past weekend. My Name is Pauli Murray, and I put it on my list of documentaries.
Yeah, that's, it's, you know, it was really very, truly an honor for me to do this because I never would have kind of made myself do the research. I've been a Pauli Murray groupie for a long time, but you just continually learn. And so when I was doing the work on this, I knew about the documentary, and I chose to wait till I could see it, you know, not at Sundance. But she is really coming into her own, and more and more people are learning that she, so many of the things that we associate with other people was her work. She sat down long before Rosa Parks did. She was behind Bayard Rustin and MLK in, in the March in 1963. She was very much a part of the Brown versus Board of Education litigation, never got credit for it. So, you know, I feel like as we lift her up, this documentary, I'm sure will peel back a lot more for all of us. And there's a really terrific book, I put it aside, but there's a book by Patricia Bell Scott about her relationship and connection with Eleanor Roosevelt, which really gives you another side that, you know, we just don't get. So thank you so much. I know you have other business to do and other posts, but I really appreciate your asking me tonight, and have a good meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. That was awesome. That was awesome. All right, now, we are really excited to have Kendall here with us.
I'm gonna stay and listen to Kendall.
Yeah, yeah, so Kendall, you take it away.
Hello, everyone. If you don't know who I am already, my name is Kendall Lidle. I am one of the members on the Carboro Youth Advisory Board. I am also the co-Vice President of the NAACP Youth Council in Chapel Hill, Carboro. And I will be reading "I Too" by Langston Hughes. I was gonna do a different Langston Hughes poem earlier, but then I was like, it didn't really connect with me. And then I saw this one, I was like, it, I felt more connected to it. So I was, just want to do this one for you guys, so, yeah. "I Too Sing America." "I am the darker brother. They send me to eat in the kitchen when company comes. But I laugh and eat well and grow strong. Tomorrow, I'll be at the table when company comes. Nobody will dare say to me, 'Eat in the kitchen,' then. Besides, they'll see how beautiful I am and be ashamed. I too am America."
Yeah, thank you. It's awesome. Great choice. Thank you. I've heard that one. That's an awesome one. Um, well, great. What a wonderful night to have these, these poems read to us. And we thank you both again for being here. It's awesome.
Thank you. Have a good rest of your meeting.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, girl.
Here. Be well. Thank you.
Take care, y'all.
Bye.
All right, let's see. So next, we have an announcement of upcoming meetings. Kathy?
All right, Mayor and Town Council. The meetings between, just one second, let me pull it up. I have the calendar misplaced. All right, the meetings between now and your next meeting. The Arts Committee will meet February 10th at 6:00 PM. The Economic Sustainability Commission will meet February 10th at 7:30 PM. The Stormwater Advisory Commission will meet February 11th at 6:30 PM. The Environmental Advisory Board will meet February 11th at 7:00 PM. The Planning Board will meet February 11th at 7:30 PM. The Human Services will have a public hearing February 15th at 6:15. That runs until 8:30. And then your next meeting is February 16th at 7:00 PM.
Wow, a busy, busy week. Okay, Damon?
Just tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock, the Durham Chapel Hill Carboro Metropolitan Planning Organization Board will meet by Zoom, of course.
Thank you, Damon. And you know, just FYI, I think it's also on Facebook, isn't it, Damon?
It's broadcast on Facebook. That's right.
For those of you that, like, really are excited and want to see that, you can, you can question on Facebook. It's a really huge group. It's, it's, yeah. Okay, Randy?
Yeah, the Southwest Advisory Board meeting that Lydia and I diligently attend is on Thursday evening, and that's at 6:00. The EAB is also continuing a meeting that night at 7:00, beginning at 7:00. And I think the only other one that I wanted to mention, well, that goes into next week, so Monday, nope, that's, I can mention that when that comes up. Thanks.
Okay, great. Yeah, thanks, Randy. Okay, anyone else have other events to mention?
Yes, Sunday is, of course, Valentine's Day, which is an opportunity to share a little love with our small business community.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up, because I'm sure all of us kind of saw some emails from, from the CBA about, for the love of Carboro, and ways that you can, you know, support. That's, you know, a, I guess, promotion we've had for several years, has a slightly different look this year. But again, a lot of ways you can support our local businesses, so. All right, um, okay, so Kathy, moving on now to requests from speaker, visitors, speakers from the floor. I think we have at least one or two people signed up to speak.
Do. Just one, Mama. I will see who's here. Okay, I have Shelley Welsh.
Shelley, can you hear us? All right, there. We can see.
Okay, and you want me to bring up the document that you emailed?
Yes, please.
All right, you want to, we'll want to bring it up before we start, then.
Yeah, let me, we'll let that. Okay, and I will start my timer.
Okay, so we're back again. This is a conversation about the Merrick gravel pit and Tony Merritt's destruction and a notice of violation. What you see here is a letter from the town of Carboro. This is a notice of violation sent to Tony Merritt on September 2019, and also incorporated in a Superior Court order by Orange County in June of 2020. And what this states is that, highlighting in yellow, that a professional survey by Tony Merritt must be conducted in order to determine which portions of the road he constructed are located in the stream buffer. It goes further to say in the bottom yellow, the survey must include the location of the gravel drive, all utility poles, the mining boundary, the ephemeral stream, and the buffer areas. If we move to page two, we see an email from Merritt's attorney, Richardson, to Nick Herman, which says, this is a working survey of the stream buffers that was requested. If we move to page three, Kathy? What was received was a survey from Merritt's surveyor, and it's still missing a couple, very important items. The sketch is a, is a working sketch of a survey. And what's missing is the actual gravel drive that was installed by Tony Merritt. And what also is missing is the ephemeral streams in the buffer areas. If you go to page four. So this is a map of, the red area is the focus area. The white solid lines are the western and southern borders of the Merritt property that we're talking about here. The yellow dotted line is the gravel drive that was installed by Tony Merritt, which is part of this notice of violation, among other things. Also, the stream buffers were not indicated. As you should see here, this is a screenshot of the town of Carboro GIS system. So clearly, the green stream buffer, Zone 1, and the blue stream buffer is not shown on the survey. And there's a reason why it's not, is because they don't want to show that to you. This is the area that needs to be repaired. And if you refer back to the original notice of violation, it's very clear what the town of Carboro is responsible in doing to correct this problem. We also sent a notice to Nick Herman back, gosh, back in September, when we started to see these stakes show up on the property, which we believe are incorrectly placed. We sent a notice out to, to the surveyor to please indicate exactly what these markers were for. We had never heard a response back from Nick. And we also received this survey about two weeks ago and want to know what Nick's response to the November 12th email from Richardson is.
That is three minutes.
Okay, um, go ahead and stop the screen, screen share. Thank you for being here. I'm not, I'm not certain that we can say anything at this time. I'll ask Brady Herman, who's our, our attorney here tonight, for any comment or...
Yeah, I appreciate your questions and concerns. I as well can't go and comment at this time in open session on that.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. Thank you for being here and telling us about this.
Oh, we're not done. I would like my three minutes as well. So we want to make it really clear that you all, every single one of you, has absolutely hijacked our lives with this issue. This is three years that we have been coming here and trying to get you to enforce this. You are so vulnerable, every single one of you, to a lawsuit. And that Brady Herman will come here. We, we absolutely knew, and discussed on the way here, Nick Herman will not be at the meeting tonight because he does not want to address this. Why on earth would the town council, would the town attorney not respond to Ian Richardson's November 12th email? My guess is, he said, let me just pick up the phone and give him a call. That's what we've learned is code in government for, we don't want a record of our response. A sketch does not a survey make, folks. We are so god-awful sick and tired of this. And the fact that we are three years into this, and it appears that you guys are doing a backdoor deal is totally unacceptable. We have hired a large firm out of Raleigh to complete a survey of this area, an accurate, professional survey. We do not believe that Don Israel's survey is accurate and professional, which is why we reported him to the Board of Examiners, who are now investigating it. We spent four hours on the phone with their investigator between Friday and Monday discussing this and Patrick Schillington. We are beyond frustrated and sick and tired of getting the runaround and having you hide things from us. And that's exactly what you are doing. The fact that we asked for a public records request, and we got Ian Richardson, Ian Richardson's email, and no response. Ian Richardson's email and no response whatsoever from the attorney is unacceptable. You do not have to provide, at least not until we sue you, you are not required to provide as a public records production, your attorney's communications with you. But your attorney's communications with other attorneys must be provided to us. And if we have to take you to court to get it, that's what we're going to do. You are doing something that is not transparent and it totally sends me over the edge. I will not tolerate it. We will not sit back and allow it to happen. We will expose everything that you are doing that is not fair and just. You are not applying your L U O equitably, and you know it. And what individuals out there have paid fines and penalties and put up with all of your paperwork and red tape? Meanwhile, you're going to ignore this. That's what you're doing. Three years. We are getting new ponding that is now killing the rest of the trees that are on our farm property.
That is three minutes.
This is never going to be over until you address it appropriately.
All right, thank you all.
Could I just ask one request? Given that what Shelley forwarded us is public records and it's known that we're engaged in something that doesn't allow us to comment. There's just a simple question that's being asked and it's about the notice of violation. And the request it makes is that there be a survey made. So my question for the attorneys is, is what that, that survey sketch, whatever has been shared, meet what the notice of violation has requested? That's, that's what I would like to know.
Me too.
And I will transfer that question over to Nick. I just don't know the answer to that, Sammy.
Thank you, Brady.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Sammy, Brady, and thank you, Shelley and Kevin. All right, Kathy, I think we have another speaker from the floor.
Yes, I'm bringing Sotaria Shepperson over.
Hey, Sotaria, can you see, can you hear us? Okay, it's good to see you.
See you. Yeah. Hi, everyone.
Hey there. You have a soft three minutes to talk to us about what you want to talk about.
Um, can I just request in my three minutes, we all take a deep breath together? That would help me. So. I do not envy you tonight. Um, my name is Sotaria. This is my partner Sophie. We co-own Present Day on Main, which for a long time has been known as Johnny's Gone Fishing. I am really interested in turning our space into a mixed-use space using containers. There have been examples of this done in Dallas for affordable housing in Dallas, Texas. There's an article on it. And then in Wilmington, North Carolina, it's called the Cargo District. We've also traveled overseas to see how effective something like this could be for the community. And as an advocate of affordable housing, I just see it having some housing. We could put the coffee shop into a container and then have maybe two or three small businesses. I think it's important that we are responsible landowners. And I think it's time to do something just more beneficial to, for our community. We would need help strategizing, planning. And I've been talking to all of my community members, which people on housing, people just who have been in the community and asking for advice and ways to do this. And I'm really excited about it. I know things like this take time. I've been talking down about why we can't do it next week. So I am really excited and I hope you all will be open to it. This building in and of itself, it costs us a lot of money to keep up. It's an older building. Sophie and I have been doing a lot to try to have, you know, get the PPP loans. I've been talking to John Brown Hartman about how to keep things moving. We both have other jobs. I have two other jobs. Sophie has another job. And really, a lot of those finances go into the shop. We have the shop because we believe that it's a great asset to the community. We want to make sure we're intentional about that. We don't just want to be like, let's sell the land and then the whole thing turns into a parking lot. Or whatever. We're trying to be very intentional about that. And so I hope where you all would be able to support and guide us, you would. And we're always open for conversation and any, you know, we have coffee. We can offer you coffee. If you want to talk down, you know, sit down and talk with us, we will be open to that. But I really think the community could benefit for something that doesn't just benefit us. We could have this big space by ourselves, but we really, really value community and, and resourcing ourselves and the community at large.
Okay, well, first of all, thank you for being here. It's great to see you. It's great to see your energy and your thoughts and ideas and willingness to try to make your values a reality. And I saw, I think I saw the same shipping container kind of things last weekend, too. And it was real colorful and I, I've seen them a lot of places, but I've seen them recently also. Um, let's see. Do other council members have comments? You know, my inclination is we kind of, you know, get these two in touch with town staff and kind of work them into our affordable housing current plan and kind of have them front and center in terms of what we want to do and the comp plan and all that. Let's go, who wants to go? Randy, then Jackie, then whoever?
Yeah, thank you, Sotaria and Sophie. Um, I, you know, I love the new concept that you, you've brought to the corner there. I also want to remind council that it must have been maybe about four years or so ago when we were talking about affordable housing at our retreat, I had asked about containers. And so I think staff may have looked into it marginally. But this is a great moment to yet again take a look. And I really, I'm really delighted that you've brought that question forward because it's, this is a good time to take a look and a deeper dive.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Randy. Let's go Jackie and then whoever else.
Thank you, and thank you for what you're bringing to our community. And when this is all over, I'll come see you.
You got it.
I think we're Facebook friends.
Yes, I love your, I don't know how you're counting all these days, but I love it.
I'm counting them to keep saying, um, I'm married to a small builder. And I, I want to preface this by saying I love the basis of your idea and of having units. I want to invite you not to get hung up on the containers, but rather to think about what the containers will provide. Because when it comes to using the containers and making them habitable, you're not necessarily saving money. So I mean, it's a really cool idea, but don't get hung up on the containers until it's completely, you know, think about units and if containers turn out to be the most affordable way to do it. But I know every time we see container stories, James is like, this is the most harebrained thing. And once you do this and this and this and this, you're not really saving any money. You're limiting yourself. So like, I love the idea. Think a little, maybe containers will work, but be open to the idea that they might not, okay?
Yeah, I'm totally open, especially since all of our money. So, yeah, I'm open. Thank you for that.
Okay, okay, good.
Right. So in the interest of agenda of management, I think I would like to, Mr. Manager, can we refer this to you and to staff to kind of follow up on and, and kind of run with?
Absolutely. We'll be in touch. John will be in touch and get with Trish and see what we can do.
All right, sounds great. Sounds great.
Thank you all for tonight.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Sophie.
Appreciate it. Okay, Mr. Manager, then we're moving on here to consent agenda.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and members of the council. Three items on your consent agenda. The first item is approval of the meeting minutes from January the 19th and 26th. Kathy, well, which, we have some amendments by?
Yes, amendments by Councilmember Romaine. I don't have it in front of me. I can't remember what the date was for your amendments. And then I know January 26th, Councilmember Siles and Slade.
Yeah, I think all of them were for the 26th.
Twenty-six, okay. I thought so, too. I just couldn't remember. Thank you.
I had one for the 19th, maybe.
Okay, and then we want to set the public hearing for March 9th for the Maple Avenue Right-Away Permanent Closing. And then the last item is a group letter to submit public comments to the North Carolina Utilities Commission concerning Duke Energy's 2020 Integrated Resource Plan, Mayor.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion, so move.
Motion by Barbara, second by Jackie.
I have a question about number two.
All right, question, go ahead, question. What's your, what's your quick question?
I just wanted to add for the, the, the public information on the right away from Maple Avenue that we also include the, the kiosks if they're operational.
Posting there also. Yeah, okay, all right, that sounds great. And then Sammy, did you, were you chiming in to, to move or second? Okay, all right. And then from that, y'all, let's, let's raise our hands because it's hard for me to hear when people are yelling out things. But anyway, okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Randy?
Aye.
Damon?
Aye.
Me, aye. Barbara?
Aye.
Jackie?
Aye.
Sammy?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Okay, very good. All right, we're on to the next item, Mr. Manager.
Okay, so under other matters, the next item on your agenda is a consideration of text amendments to the land use ordinance related to the historic Rogers Road neighborhood. And you've heard this one before and I think we're maybe coming close to completion. So Tina's going to give the staff report.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Tina, I have you called in. I know for your audio, but I don't know which town account you are logged in on, so we can see your screen. So if you can hear me, Tina, raise your, thank you.
Number seven, yeah.
I think my audio is working with my computer, if that's better. So let's go with that, please. Okay, very good. Oops. There we go. Good evening, everyone. If.
I'm sorry, Tina, hang on a minute. It looks like, is Sotaria still with us, Kathy? I don't know if you want to?
Oh, she's still here.
Yeah, you might want to, I don't know if you want to drop her or come back in the waiting room or whatever.
Put her back over in the waiting room. Thank you.
Okay, all right. So sorry, Tina, go ahead.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I have a real short presentation. I'll go ahead and share my screen if I may. Okay, success, I hope. Okay, and again, the really quick, the purpose of this really is just to review the key elements of the draft ordinance and help frame your remaining discussion points. Quick background and overview, this is just a few of the key milestones to remind us all of how far we've come. I think the ones of particular interest from June of 2019, when you did move forward adopting the residential portion of the, of the project, as well as rezone for the residential uses. And then in November, when we kind of looked at this with fresh eyes and made some rather substantial changes that I think made the, the draft ordinance more consistent with the mapping our community's future. Quick review of some of that alternative language from the November public hearing. I'm not going to go through it all because it's on your screen. I'd just like to point out the highlights. Under section one, the, the remaining item really before you tonight is to discuss the minimum size for the district. A quick reminder that we've expanded home occupations as part of this, this whole program. But a reminder that home occupations are still considered an accessory to a residential use. The maximum building size for a standalone accessory, building for a major home occupation is 2,000 square feet. Those sizes were intended to make those smaller than the maximum home size. Your true commercial type or non-residential uses are identified in the table permissible uses. And I just want to be clear that those are distinct from the major home occupations. The maximum square footage of those non-residential uses are 3,000 square feet. The one exception being the restaurant, which is 2,000 square feet. And that was intended to make sure that that restaurant stayed relatively small scale. So those are things, I think, are the real key things that we, we talked about that maybe still needed some clarification. Quick reminder, when we looked at this the last time, we used some of those primitive sketches to talk about or to help you visualize some possible development scenarios. And you can see again, some of the main issues here, relatively limited places for, for access to the roads and some pretty significant natural constraints. What you're not, and this is the stream buffer that you're seeing. What you're not seeing is that the hardwoods are down here as well as a few areas of steep slopes. Actually, let me go back up to here real quick. So also, the bullets on this page are intended to cover some of the remaining items that you talked about at the last meeting that I think you wanted to talk about a little bit today. And I'll just point out the few things. We do have right after this, Will Hines from Sun Gate, who will give kind of a primer about our stormwater regulations. And I just want to touch again on this question about future needs and flexibility. We did create a flex, flex-based definition as part of this creation of the HR districts, but we never came up with a use classification for that. I think we had envisioned that flex-type spaces would either be office uses for, say, incubator space or manufacturing uses for more maker space. And so I just want to make sure that I clarify that so that I can stop talking and dish it off to Will Hines to talk about stormwater. I just want to cover the procedural notes right quick. We did have the public hearing in November. The 24-hour comment period ended the next day. The key thing that you do need to decide on before considering adoption is this size of the district that's been left blank and the consistency resolutions and so forth are in your packet. And just for members of the public, the discussion before you tonight is about the text amendment to create the district. It is not a rezoning and there's no specific development proposal on the table at, at this time. So I will shift gears to stormwater management. And Kathy, if you'd pull in Will Hines, and he'll cover the next two slides, and that will conclude our presentation.
All right, Will, you should be in. Just unmute and show your camera, please.
And.
We hear you.
Okay, there we are. All right, so my name is Will Hines of Sun Gate Design Group. And Tina has asked if I would just go over the stormwater requirements that are set in the land use ordinance. As you can see on your slide, which can't see. But anyway, if the net impervious is greater than 5,000 square feet, and I just want to clarify that, that means that if there's an additional 5,001 square feet added to what's currently there, then the applicant would need to meet the following requirements. And these are found in section 15, batch 263. So number one would be the post-development discharge rate shall be less than or equal to the pre-development charge rates for the 1, 2, 5, 10, and 25-year, 24-hour design tour. Number two, they need to install stormwater control measures that meet the state minimum design requirements. Nutrient removal. Now, this would include nitrogen, phosphorus, and also total suspended solids. And number three, there is a maximum allowable increase in the annual stormwater volume that is based on the existing composite curve number for the site. As you can see below, number three, you can see a chart. And on the left-hand side, it gives you the ranges for the curve number. So at the top, you see greater than 78. At the bottom, you see less than 64. And on the right, you'll see the corresponding maximum allowable increase for those curve numbers. And just to kind of give you an idea what these curve numbers are, a, for pavement, which is completely impervious, would have a curve number of 98. An area that's, that's wooded and good souls would be 64 or less. So that kind of gives you kind of what that chart means. And if Tina could go to the, to the next slide, please. And then, um, as separate lots, under the current zoning. Uh, each lot would be allowed to add up to 5,000 square feet of its surface, having to meet stormwater requirements. So basically, if they were combined, all the lots were combined. Uh, they would, it would, the threshold would be 5,000 square feet. But if they were not combined and you had individual lots, then each lot would have, be allowed an additional 5,000. And if anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Will. Um, let's see, let's go to Jackie and then Sammy.
I have to say that, that this is my main sticking point. There are already some properties. Like, near Tally Hall. That are experiencing creeks that are flooding and eating away at their land. It seems to be coming from up in that area. Um, I know that there's great concern. Um. I would bather. You know, originally, we wanted to say that there could be no runoff. From any, from, from any building, that, that, uh, everything had to be contained. All, all the runoff, many, many years ago when we first started developing this ordinance. Um, I like this project. I, I think it has a lot of benefits for the community. I. I don't know whether, um, we can tweak that and make that stronger. I mean, people are losing land next to the creeks. That, that's eroding. I've, I've been out and looked at it. And I've put them in touch with stormwater management who hasn't been able to go out yet, but you can see where the already, that, that. What's going on up there that's causing it. But I think if we added lots. And we added impervious surface, that there are existing homes. That are really going to pay for it. And I'm worried that we can get into. Another situation like we have in some other neighborhoods now. Where there's constant flooding be, because of development. I don't know how we address that. In the ordinance or whether that happens in the permitting. Um, and, and, and the permitting process, but I think. I think we're opening, we're setting ourselves up and our neighborhoods up for some real headaches if we don't address this upfront. I feel really strongly about that.
Um, thank you, Jackie. And I think that's kind of, and that, I guess, the crux of what these two, how these two decisions, this decision we have to make is related to that. Uh, let's go, uh, I think Sammy was next and then Damon. Sammy, y'all, you're not, you're muted.
Sorry, sorry about that. Um, to Jackie's point, the main thing is to not do this, um. Rezoning as, as initiated by the town, but rather have it be a conditional use zoning through which we would set those conditions to, to go above and beyond the baseline. That I think Will just described as, as for stormwater. Um, is, is I think, uh, my understanding of how we would guarantee it being more stringent. And sensitive to the neighbors' concerns about stormwater runoff and, and. I'd like to hear Tina, maybe, maybe if, if you could let me know if I'm right or not in that regard. Um, but, um, the second question I had is in relation to Will, your presentation. It sounds like, uh, as a district, the, the baseline would be 5,000 square feet of impervious surface. Yet, if it is subdivided. Each of those have a maximum of 5,000, so. There's a kind of an inconsistency, I, in my view of like how. How the, if the intention is not to have too much runoff, um. But you can do it, you can have more runoff if you subdivide, then how are we, um. Why, what's the difference? Why do we have it per district and then subdivided, you can go above and beyond that per district?
Well, it's not per district, it's, um, uh, a lot. Uh, individually, each lot is allowed up to 5,000 square feet additional. But if you combine the lots. So if someone had it surveyed and had it, all those lots recombined, so it's technically just one lot. Then that one lot, which is much bigger. Only be allowed 5,000 square feet.
Oh, got it, the other way around. Um, okay, thanks, that helps. Um, and I think, uh. Think that, that's my questions for now, thank you.
Um, thanks, Sammy. Let's go to Damon and then we'll go back to Jackie.
I have a follow-up, yeah.
Am I going now?
Uh, you go ahead and go, and then Jackie's going to do a follow-up, I think, to what Sammy was saying.
Uh, I think, you know, to me, this question about the, the, um. Allowed, per, per, the allowable, um, impervious surface per lot. Is connected to the other question that we really need to address, which is the. The filling in the blank and what the minimum lot size will be for the district. If, and so I think those are connected, if I understand what we're doing here correctly. So that's one way to be addressing this, is to be thinking carefully about what we see as the minimum lot size for a district. Or for a property that would be zoned. Uh, in this way. Um. And maybe Tina can make sure that I'm saying that right. Um, the other thought I have related to that is that, um. The, uh, also related to this issue of the, the minimum lot size that we need to decide on tonight, Tina, I'd be interested in some thoughts from you about, it can, kind of reminding us about. What the background to that conversation has been, what the, what the sort of pros and cons are, you know, what, what are the considerations there when we're thinking about what that, that number ought to be? Um, I think that would be helpful for me to, for, for me thinking through it.
Yeah.
The other, um, note on around, around this issue of, um, impervious surface that I think is important is that. You know, that. Under the. Existing zoning. The existing lots, under the existing zoning, can, can meet, can, can do what Will has described. They can. Have, uh, an increase in impervious surface of 5,000, up to 5,000 square feet without any requirements under the stormwater management ordinance. Um. And then if they, if, you know, each of those lots, if they went above that, of course, would have to meet those requirements that Will described. So we're already in a situation on all of the properties up on Rogers Road that we're looking at here, where each of those lots can. Develop impervious, add 5,000 square feet of impervious surface without triggering these requirements that Will summarized. So. Just wanted to, um, make sure, um, to note that because I, again, I think that, that really is what draws us back into this conversation about making a decision about. Uh, what the minimum for, the minimum lot size is going to be for. The district that we're creating here, for the description that we're creating here. Um, and I have some other comments about the topic too, but it sounds like we need to. First probably work our way through this stormwater issue.
Yeah, yeah, and, and Tina, can you, and I'll come back to you in a second, Jackie. Tina, I'm, I'm, I'm getting a little bit confused, um, with talking about. The minimum acreage per lot and then the minimum size of the district. Is it the idea of. The district could be required to be an X number of lots? I mean, that, that's where I'm, I'm kind of just getting a little confused on some terminology here. I can't hear you.
Okay. Um, sure, um, a little bit of history might be helpful. My, my recollection back in 2019 when, um, when you all first began to discussing. Um, possible new districts kind of in earnest. There was an interest expressed in requiring one single uniform development. And I think, um, Alderman Chaney, I think, took the lead on that, that part of the conversation. And the idea was that, well, if we required this to be conditional zoning. An applicant would have to come forward, propose one design for the entire project. There'd be a lot of opportunity for public input and for you all to be able to. Have those conversations with the applicant members of the community. Seemed to be some real, that seemed to gain some traction and we proceeded in that direction. As we continued to talk it through, um. There was some new conversations about, well. Perhaps it would be an expensive endeavor to expect one person to come in and buy all eight lots. Um, and that perhaps it would be more, it would be more inclusive to allow smaller clusters to be developed. And that might let more folks that live in that community be able to, um, take more advantage of the new opportunities allowed by this district. Um, so there's kind of different options from that. I think what we've also heard, um, is that originally there, as, as you all know. The eight properties are in single ownership. That was partly why they were identified early on through the mapping our community's future. As a potential kind of mixed-use development site. I think originally, perhaps there was interest in selling all of them, and I think over time, maybe. The interest has shifted a little bit of maybe interest of selling, say, six and retaining some of those. Um, at least in the short term. So we've been trying to. Kind of look at some different things that might allow different interests to, to move forward. Um, so that's kind of the way we've kind of come to where we are, a full circle. Um. Going back to the question of the, the size of the district versus the size of individual lots. So. I think the idea is that in almost any scenario, it seems likely that you would not be developing each lot individually. It would be likely that you would combine at least two or three of those together. Um, when we looked at those scenarios the last time, I think we showed maybe three options, one where. You developed the whole thing, one where maybe you kind of broke it into two, um, clusters, so to speak, that seemed to work with the two entrance points. Um. And, and, and so we've kind of proceeded with that. The idea being that if you were to combine a number of lots together. Then you would likely subdivide those into smaller house, individual home sites. Um, and so there'd be a combination of smaller homes and then, um, some type of, because of the mixed-use component, some type of non. Uh, residential use. And that circles back to the question about, well, what's the difference between an AIS? How does that fit into the picture? So, the minimum lot size was, was increased so that it would become about three dwelling units per acre. That matches the existing, um, size for the residential, the companion residential district. And that was the interest expressed in the, um, mapping our community's future, something that would allow smaller homes, but still not be super dense. Um, so when we circled back around, we thought, well, let's stick with that number rather than go as small as, uh, 7,500 square feet. Using the AIS provisions, the arch, architecturally integrated provisions, you can still, once you have, um, combined a number of lots. You can reduce those lot sizes as part of a uniform development. So you can increase the maximum density that you get. So the total number of units remains the same, but you can shrink the lot sizes and you can shrink the setbacks. Um, and that way, that extra space, which the ordinance refers to as saved, the saved space. Would then be most likely put into open space. And as you recall, the natural constraints, that type of an arrangement, a kind of a conservation cluster type development. Lends itself to a property such as this where there are some rather significant constraints. So, I think I've touched on a couple of issues, so maybe I should stop talking and let you all kind of go back to some questions.
Okay, and before I go back to Jackie, I just, I, I wanted to ask you, um, this blank line. Um. About the property proposed for rezoning. When HRCC district shall include no less than the blank contiguous acres. If it was somewhere between, um, zero and all four of those lots. What, what would we, what, what acreage would we, we be roughly talking about?
Well, the total, all eight lots together is about 16 acres, give or take. Um, the two lots that are on the, the, the northern, let me, if I may, go back to an image. Here we go. So these two lots here.
We can't see it, but.
Oh, sorry. Let me go back and share my screen if I may. Okay. Um, so these two lots here, um, were the ones that were identified as potentially being retained. And so collectively, they're probably about. A little less than an acre and a half. So that would leave you, you know, a good. You know, more than 12 acres as kind of one cluster. Um. And so that's just an option. You know, you could certainly set it something lower. Um, the new, there are some, some new language that we added, um, in November. Which talks about how you could expand the district as well. So in theory, you could set it a little bit lower than you think you might need and then. Um, and then an applicant would come forward with something that would certainly meet that threshold and in fact exceed it.
Okay, alright, thank you. Um, let me return to Jackie and then carry on with other questions.
My, my concern remains. That we have been unable to identify the source of. Flooding that's causing erosion in that neighborhood already. Um. I've, I've asked the town for this couple, these couples asked, I'm sure there are other couples, other families. Homeowners on Tally Hall who are really worried about, about the flooding. I don't want to do something that's going to exacerbate a problem that, that we're not adequately addressing. There, there's new runoff causing new erosion. So, I, I really want this project to happen. Is there anything we can put into it? That, that would stipulate that, that. People downstream property would, would, would be protected. We're not just talking flooding, we're talking erosion of property. Um, that, that's only going to get worse. And I can see happening what's happened in other neighborhoods. Um. And, and I don't want that to happen for. For the sake of the homeowners, for the sake of the people who are building. Um, is there anything we can put into this? That, that would stipulate that, um, projects cannot cause. Cannot cause stormwater damage to, to, um, to abutting properties.
Well, I'd, I'd like to ask Tina to address that, but I think, um, I think, you know, kind of the point. That, that Damon raised and that we perpetually seem to run into. That we, we seem to run into with these, you know, land use decisions are that. We have a really strict, you know, already stormwater requirement within our land use ordinance and. Um, you know. Ostensibly, when a development occurs on those lands, you know, there's built in those. Ways to control stormwater. And I think that part of our decision here about the size of this. The minimum size that we need to come up with. Um. Is, is, I think, informed in part by the knowledge that, that developer then will be. Uh, responsible for addressing that in a, in a maybe greater manner than they would on just smaller lots, but I might be wrong with that assumption, Tina, um, tell me.
We're not doing it now. And, and we don't know why this flooding is happening that's happening now. I'm, I'm worried about, about what will happen in, in the future. Certainly, we would have to make it. So that any permit was really, really strict. Or else we're, we're also setting two neighborhoods up to be in conflict with each other, who are not currently in conflict with each other.
Well, I, I also know, I might be wrong, y'all, but I, I think that even though we have pretty strict stormwater requirements, I think one of the things we have kind of going on with staff is. Taking another look at that too, with the flood plan, or I, I might be wrong, but with the, the 100-year flood.
Water Management Committee is, but. But. It, this is real-time stuff that, that's going on.
Well, this is us rezoning this and this is, you know, we're still away from a time when someone would come forward with then a development, with a proposal and it's, it's a little ways off, so.
I know.
Um, alright, let's, I, I don't know if Tina wanted to respond to my question or if you want to hear, let's hear from Damon first, Tina, and then maybe you can chime in with, okay.
Um, yeah, I think, I mean, I think Jackie's concerned. I, I thank you for, for, for focusing in on that again. Um. The, the, the kind of thing that keeps coming back up for me, I, I feel like, and maybe I'm misunderstanding, but I feel like that, that rule about the storm, the runoff. Um, it's already at play. Even under the existing zoning. In other words, somebody could come in now, not even request this new zoning category that we're talking about creating here tonight, right? And they could just propose a development under the existing zoning, and that would bring up the concerns, the exact same problems that Jackie is identifying as, as a potential problem for runoff. And so in a way, I guess, what, what I'm thinking about is that's kind of not even. Um. That's not a problem that's. Really about this potential zoning category. It's really even the existing zoning category, really every zoning category that we have in the town. Um, that could, that would potentially be, um. Uh, presenting a problem if, if we're talking about runoff from development that's 5,000 square feet or less. Um. So I guess I'm, maybe. I'm not seeing that as a particular issue for this zoning category. Um, any more than it is for the existing zoning category. that's already on this, on these properties along Rogers Road. And so it's something that we need to address regardless, right? I think what Jackie is pointing out is this issue of if there is some new sources of runoff or flooding that we're not understanding, we need to be addressing that regardless of whether the properties here that we're looking at continue with their existing zoning, or if they someday in the future take on a new zoning that we might consider someday. As to the question about this minimum acreage, this, you know, I I would kind of appreciate a little bit of guidance. To be honest, I'd appreciate some guidance from staff on this question. I don't, I honestly don't feel like I I I just would appreciate some insights here. I don't know how to answer the question. I mean, I think is the idea that we say, you know, does it make sense just to kind of match the way we numbered some other things in in our in our regulations that we say the minimum acreage for a development of this kind has to be five. It would kind of fit in here because then that's, you know, it's total 16 here. I mean, I don't know, but I don't, I have no idea. I don't feel like I, and this is why I asked the question I asked earlier, Tina, it's like, I don't know what considerations I need to be thinking about when determining what that number should be.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Damon. I feel I feel a little bit the same way. Sammy.
Yeah, in in regard to the question of the size of the district, I remember the conversation of making it smaller would make it not so more accessible, not just to developers, to access this kind of development on someone's property. And and to the extent that this is very much informed by the community, I I feel that making a district allowable for a smaller property would be more accessible and more likely to be developed by people who are currently living there. Granted, you've set the district up, any lot that's contiguous, and Tina, again, if I'm incorrect here, please correct me. Any lot that's contiguous could be annexed onto that. So in a way, a large lot could be kind of a seed for others. The other approach would be you could have distributed developments of of mixed use, which I don't necessarily think is the problem. Historically, zoning is all about concentrating things in in specific areas. And but I I think that there's something to be said about intermixing some. So maybe that is part of what the balance is. Tina, maybe you could speak to like the extremes of like very small lot size that could be achieving this kind of zoning versus the larger. And what what are the costs and benefits between those two extremes as as a way of illustrating kind of what we have to decide here tonight?
Okay, lots, I I heard a couple of different things. So why don't I offer some more thoughts about the size? And then we can shift gears and maybe Will might have some thoughts about about impacts of stormwater. And we can also talk about whether there's potential interest of maybe lowering that threshold less so that it would be less than 5,000 square feet. So I'm going to flip back. These were our little primitive sketches, which still kind of make me happy. And the purpose for looking at these last time is that they're, they were intended, and obviously they're very rough, but they're intended to do just what you've just described is what are different ways you could carve up this piece of property? And how would it work? And so the image all the way on your left, you show everything's one project. The one in the in the middle, you see what is a likely scenario. You have the owner retains the two lots here with where there, I believe there's a rental house now. And that takes up one entrance point. And so the remaining lots would use the other entrance point. And then the third scenario, which might be kind of the balance point, shows three potential clusters. The first is again, maybe the original owner retains one direct access point. Maybe no development occurs there in the short term. And the remaining two parcels would be able to potentially share an entrance point. I think it's important to realize that the two lots here all the way to the right, which total a little bit more than five acres. I think that on the average, these these long narrow lots are about two and a half acres each. And this one here is almost 2.75 because it has this extra little piece to get road frontage. But these two lots are pretty encumbered with the street, with this, with the drainage way and the associated stream buffers. So this area here in the bottom is the most likely going to end up being open space. So I think those are just the factors that would need to be taken into consideration. It would be quite difficult to develop this lot by itself. Even developing these two lots by themselves might be a little challenging. You might have to include these three. So you're probably looking at about 2.5 times three, you're probably looking at about at least five acres, potentially seven and a half acres to realistically get some kind of a development. Considering these constraints. And Marty could probably run these figures through different scenarios a little faster than I could. But these are the types of things I think we just need to take into consideration. You know, where's their, you know, natural constraints and access points? So I'll I'll stop.
Okay, that's that's helpful. Tina, thank you. Let's go to Damon.
Just quick call. So I, as I look at this and I hear your explanation, thank you again. This this is actually really helpful, although I I take your caution that these are very rough sketches. But it's helpful for thinking through questions that I think we've all been raising here. So am I, would I be correct if I said that to achieve something like on the right hand side? To achieve the possibilities that are suggested in the right hand image, you would need a, to to set that minimum acreage at about five acres. Is that?
I think so, yes, yeah.
Okay, that's helpful. Thanks.
And if I may add just one more point, is that the way the district is set up, there's a minimum of, I think, 15% of the other use, meaning if it's predominantly a residential project, you have to have at least a certain percentage of non-residential uses and vice versa. So I think when we look at the whole project as as one potential uniform district, we were looking at a just under 14 acres total usable property. And about two and a half would have to be that 15% of a, and that would be the minimum of, you know, if you weren't kind of balanced. And my point of bringing that up is just to say that if the lots ended up being too small, it might be difficult to meet those requirements.
All right, thank you, Tina. And Damon, thank you for that question. And these maps have been a little helpful around that acreage number. All right, other questions, thoughts, comments from other council members?
Tina, just just, could you remind us about the way in which we can be more strict in terms of stormwater as a condition? So tonight, we're setting this as an opportunity for someone to zone, or we could outright zone. If someone else came, they they petition us, we could put more conditions on that. Is that correct or not?
So I may look to Will for kind of a technical answer, but but before I hand over the mic, you know, the one thing just to keep in mind is that is that with conditional zoning, the conditions would have to be mutually acceptable. So it's not that the town wouldn't be able to just impose something, you would have to come to a meeting of the minds over that.
Thank you, Tina. Will, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I mean, you could make the stormwater requirements more restrictive. I know you've discussed in the past, like, for example, with Voice Farm, adding the additional 100 year to the post-development discharge rates that you would have to keep below the pre. That certainly makes it more restrictive because that requires more attention. I know the the number three on the slide that I was reading from says maximum allowable increase in annual stormwater. That kind of addresses what Jackie was talking about as far as the lower flows that cause erosion and strains. That part of the ordinance says to the maximum extent practicable. When it gives these percentages, they're not absolute percentages. You could just say, there is no there is no wiggle room. You you have to meet this. Although there's there's only one project I've known of so far that's gotten approved. It's slightly more than they were allowed. They came in and argued their point.
Thank you. Thanks, Will. So I I guess, so I think what I'm hearing is you know, we have our current stormwater management requirements. We could, if and when a proposal comes before us, negotiate at that time for for stricter requirements if necessary, as we always can do. But we know right now, anyone could go in there right now and build what's allowable in there now, and we have this stormwater issue. I think our our decision point tonight, then, the the kind of last fill in the blank we have is this, you know, we need to decide the minimum amount of the contiguous acres for property proposed for rezoning, and knowing that this is the minimum amount. So you might have someone come in and maybe we make that minimum amount five acres or whatever, and that they could commit a petition for more, but that someone can't come in and do less than X amount of acres on their rezoning. Let's see, Randy, you had your hand up?
Yeah, Tina, I thank you so much for putting up that diagram of the lots and the options. Can you go back to that for one moment? Because what I'm hearing folks say, and and I think Tina, you're on it, is that there there's the difficulty in being able to evaluate this question has to do with not being able to see what would happen under the different scenarios of minimum acreage. You know, it's it's hard to envision. So, for example, if we looked at this, the third option that you were mentioning, the third one, which is the one furthest on the right, how, what would it be like if the minimum acreage, if let's just say we went like a half acre? What would happen if we we inserted that number? In other words, in my mind, I'm trying to play with different numbers to see what would that look like? And I'd like you to be able to tell me what, give me a scenario so that I could understand it from your perspective.
Well, again, I think the challenge would be I think there'd be two challenges. Well, actually, I think there'd be three challenges with this. Probably the most notable was if you were to subdivide this property into half acre lots, which you could do in terms of, say, an AIS, you know, you have a unified development and then you subdivide individual lots that are smaller. If you were to just take this as one chunk and try to start subdividing it kind of in a cumulative way, you would run into some issues with access. And so you'd have to come up with some type of a of a road, of a, you know, an access road that would get some of these properties towards the back to Rogers Road. I think that would be one of your issues. One of the other issues is that that system might work fine for some of the lots, but you'd have some other lots that would be very encumbered with the stream buffers.
Got it.
And then finally, because this is intended to be a mixed use district, you're supposed to have a little bit of residential and a little bit of non-residential use. So if the lots get too small, you might find yourself having some challenges. So a couple of different things at play.
Yeah, so I'm I'm kind of riffing off of what Sammy was saying, because I certainly am interested in seeing the potential for smaller lots. And given that an acre is, what is it, like 4,000 three, 40, 43,000 500 and something square feet, right? Then because an acre is is fairly large, how do you get to potentially having some smaller properties? If 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 in fact, that's something that we were interested in doing?
Sammy?
And and I I think to that question, I mean, it's it's instructive to see Tina's response because when we create new zones, a lot of times it's because of a specific property and we do the zone relative to that property. So surely this one has a bunch of constraints and an issue with access. But of all the the points Tina raised that that might be an issue that has to do with maybe another kind of property is the this question of the balance between commercial and and residential. And and that that's the one that kind of is more meaningful for me in the in the sense of like this being a zoning that's applicable potentially for anywhere in town. So again, I I I'm for like smaller smaller lots as a means for more access to lower income developers.
So so Tina, you're hearing kind of where at least some members have an interest. I mean, I think we all have an interest in, you know, trying to make this accessible in a way that, you know, maybe someone who wants a smaller amount of land to be able to do mixed use on it could do it. What, do you have a recommendation in terms of size? Minimum size that you can make to us?
When we brought the ordinance to you in November, we had inserted five acres.
Okay, yeah.
As a, as kind of a starting point, looking at these different schemes and looking at the this approximate smaller cluster.
And having heard kind of, is this discussion why it's become blank now? So for us to kind of think about, do we want to make it lower than that? Is that why or?
Well, it was left blank, so is not to let you make a decision with more discussion.
Seeking your guidance. And so that that's helpful to know that as a starting point, you were kind of thinking five. And I think we're trying to decide on this board if if it makes more sense to go a little below that, but not go so low that it doesn't make sense in some other way. So Sammy.
Yeah, thanks, Lydia. I think that that captures it. And and the five acres makes sense, given the nature of this property. So but I'd be interested in in Tina, like what what might be too small for whatever reason, putting aside the nature of this property and thinking of of how this could be applied on a different space that could have no constraints and no issues with access anywhere.
Well, well, let me, let me say this, Sammy. This is, of course, is the HRCC, right? Yeah, so this won't be anywhere else. And so maybe that's just a theoretical question we don't really need to address right now, but but recognize that in our comp plan, that's what we look at is what what can be that minimum amount that can support both of those, but be something that's doable, you know? Damon, yes?
Yeah, I think, yeah, that I think that was one thing that I had in my head too, is that my understanding is that this this zoning district were it to be applied, I mean, where it could only be in these areas along Rogers Road, it couldn't be anywhere else in the town. So that concern wouldn't really come up. Unless we don't, unless we started struggling with this in another zoning category. Sorry, Sammy, could you?
I I just wanted to, I appreciate that clarification. And and then the question is, within the zone, like, are we just wanting this, only this lot to be able to do this? Or do we want this opportunity available to others?
Yes, just this lot? Or just this big area?
I think just this area right now. Right now, I think that's what, well, it's.
I mean, how's it defined in the ordinance? Because we had to define the area.
Just this.
Right, Tina, how is it currently defined? The HRR or the Historic Rogers Road properties are just these 80, or the ones that are on this side of Rogers Road along.
That's right, that's right.
So it could only be those properties.
Yeah, yeah, it's this big, this big kind of area along that side of Rogers Road. So are are we comfortable with the five? Do you want to go a little bit less, Damon?
Yeah, I mean, I think the five makes sense. I think it's consistent with the discussion we've been having, not only about what makes this a more accessible kind of space for potential projects, but also also ties in, I think, to some of the conversation about just the restrictions of the property and some of the stormwater issues and the stream buffers and the access issues. It just seems like a good round number, so to speak. So I I think, I mean, I would just, yeah, I would recommend we just go with the five. I mean, just to keep this moving.
Is that, is that a, well, okay, we have a motion.
The other thing, the other thing I just wanted to say is I really just want to hand it to Tina and to staff for all the work bringing this to where we are. You know, when we, this is a lot different of a concept ultimately in its details than it started out a couple of years ago. And I think a lot of those initial details were what were raising some concerns, not only among council members, but of course, among the people living up in the Taliaho neighborhoods and along Rogers Road. And I think the proposal now really addresses so much of that, not only in terms of the the screening and buffering requirements along the abutting property lines, but also in terms of these stormwater issues and the the types of uses that would be available to a potential developer in this area. You've got a situation now where if you were to compare the proposed table of permissible uses for this HRCC zoning district to what used to be the zoning in this entire part of town, the RR zoning district, it actually has pulled back on a lot of what the available uses are. So it's really trying to hone in on what the intent behind the mapping our community's future report was, while also understanding that we're not looking to sort of open this up for anything. It's really meant to focus on what the intent of that report was, and not to make this simply an open, open, you know, commercial district or whatever. So I think that this is a much less, you know, in some ways, much less intensive in the sense that fewer kinds of uses are available on the property than otherwise would have been under the RR zoning district. So I'm really comfortable with it. I just really am thankful, grateful to staff for the work they've done on it. And I hope that we will move forward, and I recommend that we add five into that blank space and move forward.
Thank you, Damon. I'm, all right, well, okay.
Lydia, I have a question.
All right, wait, we have, we have, we take that as a motion, Damon, and then Barbara, and then as a second by Jackie.
Well, I guess that would be a motion for the which is attachment A.
Okay, all right. So we've started a motion in a second, and I want to make a quick comment also, but Randy's, we've got to say something.
Yes. Hang on one second. I want to be sure. I have a question regarding attachment B. I can hold that question. This is just process that I'm asking about right now. Is that correct?
Well, well, I think we're, we have a motion and a second for the resolution finding consistency, and then we're going to have, you know, the motion for the draft ordinance, I guess. So
Okay.
Do you want to ask a question right now?
I can, but my question really has to do with the uses and the the potential for flexibility in the future. And I don't know if we want to, I mean, it has, it doesn't have to do with the minimum size.
Let's have, let's have, let's address that right now, because that's part of the, you know, it's part of the ordinance, so.
That's what I thought. Okay, so I, if you take a look at, and Tina, would you put up in, I guess, attachment B, section 1C? Where it says the HRCC? And okay, and it talks about the appropriate uses. I just want to be sure from conversations that we've had in the past, and I have had a conversation with Trish, and she was, she really helped me think through this, but I want to be sure that that we we include in here where it says HRCC district may include live-work units, flex space, and then it has such as that here, I want to be clear that the HRCC does not allow retail. Is that correct?
That's the way it's been set up, yes.
Okay, can we actually, in fact, if we're, if we're not going to allow retail there, can we say that? Because I, I really feel that we just need to be specific. And then, and then my next point is that on section
Randy, can I just make a comment? I think these, it's hard to write these in a way where you say what's not included, because then all of a sudden, if you only list one, then you're not listing the other one thousand things that are not included.
Right, well, I know, but I I just, okay.
I mean, it clearly does not include that.
Right, right. But it's, I think that's the kind of thing, I guess, that whoever is going forward, they have to find that out at the very early stage. They have to be really clear about what's allowed and what's not allowed, you know?
Right, but you see where it says district include live-work units? Isn't there a way to say non-retail, just because I think that we're in a very different time right now where where business, home businesses are changing. People are selling things from home. And I, well, I, I just think that it would make sense. I mean, how many how many people do we know that are selling things from home through various internet things?
I don't know that this necessarily precludes something like an Etsy or some kind of mail order. I don't know that that's, I think that's different than flat-out retail.
Well, well, I just, I'm just saying, if it's flat-out retail, maybe we should say that and not have something like an Etsy, and that's exactly what I was thinking of, because that's where that my, my interest in entrepreneurial enterprise, I want to be sure people are protected to be able to develop further into their entrepreneurial interests. And if you mean flat-out retail is what's not allowed, I just think that we should say that.
Well, let me, I think Barbara has a comment, but then I don't know if you want to go before Tina addresses that. I'm sure there's a definition of some sort of retail, and I'm wondering if, I mean, if there's a way to address what Riley, what Randy's talking about, this putting something in the negative in there or not, but Barbara, is this on the same lines?
Yeah, I want to, I want to follow up with, with what Randy's saying, because like, what do you mean when you say no retail? Like, what, what do you, what exactly are you, are you excluding? I think I saw on the, in the table of uses, what was it, eight point, if, can you scroll down to that?
And
eight point one. Because that was, it was a little confusing for me. I think eight point one.
So the eight is the restaurant, the retail, sales and retail.
Oh, so, okay, so I'm, so I'm wrong, because I'm thinking, I'm on eight point one, I'm thinking the restaurant.
Yeah, the restaurant is okay.
So.
Sorry.
Okay, yeah, if we could go there, because that's really what I was talking about, not so much other retail. Sorry, Randy.
No, that's all right. I have another question to follow up, but you go ahead in the meantime.
I'm sorry, I don't know why my mouse is doing that.
It doesn't want to go there.
It needs some adjustment, if I can get that to work.
Yeah, because I'm believing what I saw.
Yeah, here's the restaurant.
Okay, so what does it say? So eight point, oh, so restaurant with none of the features listed in use classification below.
As its primary activity.
As its primary activity. So none of the ones listed below. Am I interpreting that correctly?
That's the way it's been drafted, yes.
Okay, so outside service of consumption, no, no drive-in, no drive-through windows, no carryout service, food delivery, mobile, prepared food vendors. So can I get an example of what that would be?
So it, I think the vision was that it would be more of kind of a breakfast, lunch-type place. I think a coffee house is what was described originally.
So this, okay, so this is what, what is for that, something like a coffee shop, like six to two, six AM, two PM kind of thing? Not all-day activity?
Well, at the end, as I, as I recall, in the end, the community came out and said that they didn't want to be restricted to stop eating it, too, and I think we extended it to nine o'clock, but yeah.
Oh, okay.
It was intended to keep it from becoming a bar, to make it clear that it was intended to be more of a coffee, lunch-type place.
Okay, just like food service and not so much alcohol or beer. Okay. Thanks, that's the clarification that I needed.
All right, thanks, Barbara. So Randy, again, it's kind of like by omission, you know, by not having retail as one of the uses here.
But it would not preclude someone from doing at-home Poshmark or Etsy?
It's shit.
Okay, but and what about if, you know, I always ask the what-if. So what if the person, their business really starts to boom, and they want to create space that, like a storage unit to keep the supply of the things that they're selling that is on, but it's on a retail scale? But it's, but it may not be walk-in business. Is that going to be okay?
So I, I think it's up to you on how you want for this to be framed. You know, what we heard when we talked about this earlier was was an interest to still retain some of that more residential and rural character, so that buildings needed to be relatively small so that they stayed in scale, and certain high-intensity uses such as retail would not be included. So we can certainly revisit that, but that may be a scenario where you kind of want to wait and see how it, if that interest comes, comes along rather than build it in right now. I think that's up to you.
Well, I just, my interest is in having flexibility for entrepreneurial enterprise that we, because the economies are changing right now. You can see this with the same kind of mindset that Soteria and Sophie have. You know, folks are thinking in very different ways, out of the box, how they're going to move into entrepreneurial fields. So I can't say we know, but I want to be, ensure that this is, this document allows for retail to be defined differently as we move forward into new economies.
Well, I mean, Randy, like, when I look at, you know, the description of different things that are allowed, you know, assembling goods, merchandise, equipment, I mean, that could be Etsy kind of stuff, whatever. That is one of the allowable uses, as long as your operations are conducted entirely within a fully enclosed building. So you could use your extra building to do these kind of, you know, small-type businesses that are, you know, not obtrusive, not outdoors, not loud, whatever. I think we have it set up in a real good way to be able to get those kind of businesses, you know, off the ground and be allowed.
Okay, so, right, so the flower business that's out there, if the florist decides that she wants to create more of a pickup shop and expand, that would be okay?
I think the way this is set up is the expectation would be if there was, if there was, if there was some amount of retail, it would be considered an accessory to the main use. It would not become the principal use. If it was to become the principal use, it would become a retail use, and that hasn't been identified as an allowable use so far.
Yeah, so I guess, I guess what I want to ensure is that some somebody in the future has a business out there and would like this revisited, that some council in the future has something to look back on that's, that specifies that the growth of a business may you know, has some flexibility. I, I don't know what we don't know yet, and and I certainly got the sense from the mapping our community's future exercise and the folks who live in the community that they want, they want something that not only meets the live-work space now, but they want something that has potential for wealth generation to come. And I'm not sensing that this quite this quite allows for that in a way that I feel that maybe we could be more progressive to think about.
Okay, I'm going to, I have other people with their hands up, but I, I think that this does provide kind of what we're looking for in a reasonable way, balancing everything. But let me go to Barbara and then Damon.
So just kind of piggybacking off of what Randy said, I wouldn't want us to go forward with this where it's too restrictive and and the HRCC is not really, you know, allowed to reach its fullest potential for what, for what mapping our community's future and how that was laid out and what the expectation is. And so I'm not so sure that, that we're there. I kind of almost feel like we're, we're in a somewhat of a box with this, and we're really trying to tighten up here and tighten up there. You know, I understand, you know, about the stormwater management and the runoff and from development and our our neighbors and in the adjoining neighborhoods, I get that, and I do support that. But at the same time, I also support economic prosperity and wealth generation for the Rogers Road community and what we're trying to do here. And so we ought to keep our eyes like on both of those. And I just feel like this might be a little bit, a little bit restrictive. And I'm not sure that there's, there's room for expansion, and that's my concern as well. So I just wanted to weigh in on that, because we want want this to have an opportunity to flourish and provide what they're looking for out there as far as economic prosperity.
So I think it would be helpful if you and Randy have, have problems with everything that's been outlined here that is allowed here, to then discuss or come back with or tell us what else is not included in here that you would want in there, and then we can figure out if it's something that works out here or not, and if it does, what else that, that means in terms of anything else, like parking requirements or, or noise or whatever, whatever other elements that higher-intensive use would bring to this area. So, so let's just think about that a little bit. Damon?
Yeah, I think this is a good, important conversation. I mean, I think all along, I, you know, I thought what we were going for here was a district where sort of expands opportunities for sort of commercial uses, but in a way that is really meant to tie into the existing residential uses of the area. In other words, primarily major home occupations, but also the possibility of expansion into some, some limited commercial spaces in the, in the district. But not to rise to the level of intensity of a true commercial district, where you would expect there to be a lot of in-and-out traffic or that kind of thing. But the idea is this would allow for kind of that, almost like home-based kind of, or home-based levels, sort of level of intensity. I thought that's really been the nature of the conversation about this all along. And so that's kind of how it's been written up here, which does allow for sort of expansion into a secondary building that's large, you know, three thousand square feet or whatever it is, that if you did have a need for that sort of assembly or light manufacturing, that kind of thing. The, you know, I think if a business did rise to the level of being so successful, right, that it needed to expand at the level of intensity that I feel like Randy is maybe talking about in terms of like outright retail, right, or in-and-out kind of retail, that's pretty intense, that feels like a different kind of zoning district. And you know, feels like something different than what we've been talking about the last couple of years, but maybe I've been misunderstanding the conversation. It seems like this is really meant to sort of expand opportunities for those sort of neighborhood-level intensity of businesses. And then including some of these secondary uses and other buildings that could be non-residential. Rather than, but then not quite rising to the level of an intense retail district where people are driving in and out and that kind of thing.
Yeah, thanks, Damon. Back to Barbara.
And that's exactly where we are. But at the same time, I go back to the example I think that Randy had about, about the florists that's, that's already out there.
What?
And I guess maybe it would be on a case-by-case basis.
Well, I think, like, for example, that one, Tina, is that, is that a home occupation with an auxiliary use? Is that's really what Betty's Flowers is like out there right now, you know, across the way? Because I know is, is that so it doesn't preclude certain forms of retail, as long as it's not the predominant use of that property, as long as it's predominantly where you live? Is that, is that what's, I understand, like Barbara kind of is right, it probably is kind of case-by-case, depending on, you know, size and everything.
Yeah, I've kind of two thoughts to that. And one, I think we typically don't anticipate that retail would be part of a home occupation. So if there was interest in doing that, that may be something, if there's interest in having a new kind of retail use, that may be some, or a new kind of flex space use, that may need to be something we need to go back. That may need to be something we need to go back and refine a little bit. Um, you know, I was recalling when your conversations if um if it's helpful. Um, I was recalling reading the the report again, and there was some discussion of retail and it was identified in the um. In the future land use map in the report as being out at U-Banks. Um, and that was identified as a more suitable place for for true retail. Um, but it sounds like that's something that is a little bit more intensive than maybe what you're describing now.
Mm hmm. Yeah, thank you. Uh, back to Randy.
Yeah, I just want to be clear. I'm not talking about intense retail use tomorrow. I'm talking about, I mean, we s- and we've seen U-Banks with Car- the Caraway. A development start to take on um on some of that um. Uh, just just more uh, I don't know, more intense use. I'm talking about having the wherewithal to for businesses now. And businesses tomorrow and within the next year or two and post COVID. To have transition space to potentially become. More retail oriented, not to narrow their potential. To me, it seems wrong to narrow their potential into the future when we know that the. Urbanization of our community is going to be moving out. I've been in Carboro long enough now to know that. Fifteen, twenty, thirty, forty years from now. It's going to be very different out on Rogers Road and the community wants to be able to. Have the ability to grow with their community. When Saint Paul's Village comes in. This little area that we're talking about wants to be able to grow with that growth. I I just want us to think of not where it is today or tomorrow or even five years from now. But that the business people there can grow and change the way business is going to grow and change in ways we can't identify. And I'd be happy to work with Barbara and uh and John and and the manager to to talk about this and. And Trish and whomever, um, if if that's uh what what council would like.
Well, if it's a if it's another type of use that you're talking about adding to the table to then potentially be included in this area. You know, now or at the future or whatever, and maybe even a a use that is another use we could use in other parts of the town.
Sure, eh, right, because the idea is to to clarify and give some shape to this idea of. Of community commercial as it evolves.
Okay, so the question is, is that something that we do we want that to hold up this this new classification? Or do we want to go ahead and go forward with this? And then at which time that new type of designation is arrived at? Then at that time, we can amend it and add it to this right to wherever.
I'm I'm comfortable making that a friendly amendment if Barbara agrees.
Yeah, I, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I do. I do agree and let's move uh attachment B with the friendly amendment. I I don't think we should hold this up.
Okay, I think I think what we I think what we need to do is is move A and B and then have a separate motion to be working on this.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's fine. Thank you.
Now let me back up and see if if Tina, does that make sense?
So we would move forward and come back?
We would go ahead and approve everything tonight. But this particular classification that Randy's talking about that she wants to think about creating. This uh some kind of a use, and this is why, I mean, this is really where we need Tina to help us with this. You know, whatever this classification might be that we need to additionally create that. Perhaps addresses a gap we're seeing here between, you know, but not full on retail, but not something more than just. Inside enclosed home occupation kind of thing. An additional classification that allows for some more flexibility in occup- in in what you can do in your place and then.
Tina, I think it would be essentially if we were to approve this new classification, the HRCC tonight, this would potentially be an amendment, a text amendment to that classification.
Exactly. Exactly. Thank you.
But it could get this, it could go ahead and get this approved tonight. And then when we come up with this one additional classification or whatever, then we can add it into this. I I I just I just think if we wait to have this other thing done, it might take a while now.
No, I know. I think that you're exactly right and and just Tina, does that make sense to have a text amendment?
Let me finish, Randy. So I I don't know. Tina knows what it would involve. So I don't know if it makes more sense for us to approve everything tonight than work on a text amendment and then have to do that and then add it to the code and then put it back into this. Or if it makes more sense to come up with that. And then by golly, next time this comes back, just approve because then it's done. But I I I don't, I don't know. I I want to hear from Tina what she thinks is the most efficient and the most logical way to do it.
Um. I mean, we can certainly, we can cer- we can certainly um bring it back with some new information. I think it's really up to you on how you want to proceed if you'd like to go ahead and kind of move to this threshold. Um, it may be less complicated um for us to bring it back. I'll have to circle back to see about notice. Um.
Oh, okay. Um, Barbara, you have your hand up?
Uh, yes, thank you, Tina. I, yeah, I do have my hand up and I just um, I I. You know, I love uh, you know, the point that Randy's making and I do agree with it, but I I just I'm I'm ready to to move this.
Yeah, me too.
And and you know, uh, but I don't want to discount, you know, this this is discussion because I I do think that it's important. But I I I'm not I I just waiting, you know, for another month, month and a half, two months. We've we've been doing this, you know, for a while, and that's just that's just me.
All right, here here's what I suggest. I suggest we go ahead and and move this where we have a motion in a second. Let's go ahead and get this approved tonight. Boom. But let's try to have this next part be as tidy as we can. This maybe Tina kind of knows what we're talking about in terms of what we might want to add back into. You know, what what this little gap we're trying to fill. So maybe she'll be able to kind of work on that and come back to us without having to have. You know, a lot more meeting about her or getting together a lot more people to talk about. I think she probably, maybe she gets the point of what we're talking about. I don't know, Mr. Manager, you can figure that out. Um, but I am in agreement with with Barbara and others that it seems like there's. Uh, unanimity here perhaps for um a unanimous vote here for um this tonight. So why don't we go ahead and move forward with it, Randy, and then we'll make your motion afterward. Okay? So we had this original, so Damon moved attachment A, Jackie, I think, seconded it. That was uh attachment A was a resolution finding consistency. Am I correct? All in favor, say aye. Randy?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Me? Aye. Barbara?
Aye.
Damon?
Aye.
Jackie?
Aye.
Sammy?
Aye.
Aye, okay, and then and this is of course with the five thousand two in in the in the next one, then the draft ordinance, you want to move that, Damon?
This would attachment B, which is the ordinance. Sure, I'll move that.
Okay, second by?
I'll second.
Second by Randy. All in favor, say aye. Randy?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Me? Aye. Barbara?
Aye.
Damon?
Aye.
Jackie?
Aye.
Sammy?
Aye.
Okay, and then Randy, make your motion.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to um, how do I want to put this? To uh look at classification on uh uh community commercial. Um, for a potential text amendment.
Okay.
I and I don't need to be specific about how, I mean, I can have the conversation with Barbara and Tina on.
Yeah.
Yeah, just to be able to expand um uh the classification on community commercial.
Okay, so motion by Randy, second by?
Can I offer a a friendly amendment?
Okay, second by Barbara, friendly amendment by Damon.
That this conversation um be keeping in mind consistency with the mapping our community future report.
That's the that's the whole point, right?
We got, we got it, Dee. Thank you.
All right, so motion by Randy, second by Barbara. Uh, all in favor, say aye. Randy?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Aye. Barbara?
Aye.
Aye.
Jackie?
Aye.
Sammy?
Aye.
Yay. All right, good job, guys. Tina, thank you, thank you, thank you. Your patience is unbelievable in this regard, so we appreciate you. Uh, Mr. Manager, last item.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mayor and members of the council. The last item on your agenda is uh the local transit plan capital projects for the Orange County Transit Plan. So I think Zach will make the staff report. I think, maybe Tina.
All right, good evening, everyone.
Hey, Zach.
Let me get my slides up really quick. So tonight I'll be talking to you, you a little overview of the potential transit capital projects. I um, there's a short memo that you received back at the beginning of December. Uh, staff were directed to basically take that back to advisory boards. Um, and now we're kind of just circling back to keep this moving along as the uh transit plan update is still moving forward. So these small transit capital projects really um as a piece of the Orange County Transit Plan update. That update is looking at transit service for the county more than just, you know, where are we running buses, how many buses? But also um, what is the infrastructure that supports and enhances our transit service? That is bus shelters, greenways, sidewalks. Um, but there are some criteria for these little capital projects really that they have to be within a certain distance of transit service. Uh, bus stops or bus shelters goes without saying. Sidewalks have to be within a quarter mile and greenways have to be within one half of a mile. Um, so on this map, you can kind of see the little green lines of a couple of projects that we'll be looking at. Um, the first one is a kind of greenway connector through Baldwin Park over to um Bynum Street in Chapel Hill. The next one is a what we're calling the two oh three project connector, which is really to provide a direct connection from East Main Street to the two oh three site. And then uh some sidewalks on BPW Club Road. Uh, so a little closer look at Baldwin Park, really. Uh, this will provide some more direct connectivity from the Lloyd Broad neighborhood into North Side where the uh Chapel Hill Transit A Route runs. This is a uh, it's actually split between our jurisdiction and Chapel Hill, so there's some coordination that we've already started working on. Um, it's looking like it's exclusively uh public land as the the town owns the park and the other side in Chapel Hill is public right of way associated uh with Craig Street. Um, and on the right hand side of that slide is kind of just that existing sidewalk section there in Baldwin Park as to how exactly it would tie in. Um, we're not quite that detailed yet, but you can see kind of from the aerial, there's some visible wear that it is from what we've been hearing from the Greenways Commission. Uh, there's some reasonable use out here already, so formalizing this connection um seems like a something easy we can do. Um, next was the two oh three project. So this project kind of came out of our internal development review process, looking at the two oh three site plan. We talked with uh Chapel Hill Transit about, you know, can we look at adjusting bus service to provide a little more direct connectivity into the two oh three project? And kind of what we heard from them was with our vision for Roberson and the idea of a shared street trying to reroute some buses. And now having buses stop along with all the other activity going on there may not be the best decision. But if we could look at providing some kind of more direct pedestrian route from East Main Street where the J and the four oh five uh currently run. That could be a a big benefit and really also looking for an opportunity to get a bus shelter out there on East Main Street. I know Go Trial Triangle uh has some expressed some interest in that for a while. Um, but as part of this, we'll be working with this property owner. There's actually an existing alley uh kind of in that vicinity of the green circle on the map. Uh, so we'll be trying to figure out the best kind of alignment for that, how to work within the existing parking. Can we use some of their existing open space? We're not really that far detailed yet. We haven't, so we're still really at the planning level. Uh, and then finally, uh BPW Club Road. These are a couple gaps uh in sidewalk by the bus stops that were just kind of identified by staff as you can see in the two pictures in the top corner. Number one is kind of just like a crushed gravel section right by a bus stop. And then number two is really just uh it's grass. Um, so really, we want to be able to provide that accessibility for all transit riders and connect into the existing sidewalk system. Uh, for advisory boards, we presented to the planning board, the transportation advisory board and the environmental advisory board on January seventh. And we just presented to the Greenways Commission uh yesterday on February eighth. Um, and in terms of the feedback we've received from them, supportive of all these ideas, we definitely got. Uh, some direction that we really need to consider equity and how we're selecting from these projects and to consider our environmental impacts when we're moving more into the design phase. I think that was really about the um Baldwin Park link that was shown because I believe there's a stream bed in there. So just be thoughtful about design once we when and if we move forward. Um, so with that, really, this is just for any for the discussion that we think was needed. Um, there's a resolution in your packet that's really just approving these and directing staff to kind of work forward to incorporate them into the Orange County Transit Plan update. Um, for a little background on that, uh. We, there there's a process for getting these little capital projects into the plan. It just hasn't been very clearly defined to us yet. So we'll be working with the team that's updating the plan to uh get these incorporated.
Okay.
And with that, I open to any questions or?
Sure. Yeah, yeah, thank you. And I I want to make a quick comment and then I'll go Randy and then Damon and then Susan. Um, I really appreciated uh the description of each of the um projects. Uh, and I it found it interesting like the surrounding demographics. I thought that was um helpful, something that we hadn't had before and I I like seeing that, so thank you. Okay, so we got Zach, I I'm sorry, we got Randy and then who I said Randy and then Damon and then Susan.
Yeah, um, thank you, Zach. Thank you so much. Um, this has been excellent finding these these pockets and making the connections between them. Um, I really appreciate it. We had a good conversation and greenways about it. And um, I look forward to to seeing this, all these move forward. Um, uh, I do just want to it uh come behind something I had said, I don't know, a while back regarding. The Baldwin Park neighbors on the Chapel Hill side. Um, I wanted to ask a quick question as to whether or not the the folks who are contiguous and in the immediate neighborhood. Uh, uh, in Chapel Hill had been contacted because I hadn't, I haven't heard from folks in about a year about this.
So we're not really that far along yet. I've kind of just been corresponding with Bergen on their end just to get a little more information about the land that was in Chapel Hill. But as this moves forward, we'll be sure to do that.
Yeah, uh, yeah, because I had heard from the neighbors there, oh, about a year or so ago. Um, and some neighbors are really happy about being able to have a um, you know, a dedicated, clear path. And others are concerned about their their neighborhood, but I it's in a year, who knows how people are feeling? So I I think keeping your hand on the pulse of that would be great. Um, and um, I want to make one other uh statement about that. Oh, y- you know, um, there are a lot of trees along that corridor there. Um, what is the um expectation that the path would be on the far side of those trees or between them? Or had had you not gotten to that point yet?
Yeah, we're not really into that point yet. I think we're open to investigating that.
Okay, perfect. Um, and and with that, I I actually I I'll move attachment A. I I'm so pleased. Thank you.
Okay, so motion by Randy for attachment A, second by Barbara's got her hand raised. Barbara. Okay, then I have um on my list Damon and then Susan.
Thank you. I certainly support the resolution. I just wanted to ask Zach if he could confirm. That these three projects will be added to what would be included in the transit plan, but would not replace any of the small capital projects already included in the Orange County Transit Plan. Is that correct?
So they will not replace any of the ones we've already gotten approved as to whether they make it into the transit plan is yet to be determined. As I kind of mentioned, we haven't had a very clear process for what that's going to be, but we will continue to work with the staff who are developing that plan to see if we can't get these in there.
But in terms of on the town of Carboro's end of things, we're not, we're not putting forward three projects to replace any projects we had previously put forwards for for funding. This these are addition, these are additional projects. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Damon, for that. Let's see, um, Susan. And then I don't know if Barbara had her hand up again. So Susan and then Barbara.
Um, thank you, uh, thank you, Mayor, and uh thank you, Zach. Um, I have um one question, one comment. Um, first the question, so on the, is the second page of the attachment, there's the listing of the 10 projects. And I was just curious, are those in order of priority? It starts with South Greensboro Sidewalk and then Morgan Creek Greenway. I didn't know if these were prioritized or?
No, no, no more than just the, all of the ones that are already committed are further up in the list, but the new ones are at the bottom. There wasn't really any priority to them.
Okay. Um, and then my other question is, I, well, this is a comment. I had a chance to, um, I think some others did this as well, but I, I listened in on the public meeting around the South Greensboro Sidewalk. Um, I was in the Saturday morning session and I'm not sure if you listened in as well, but I, I was struck by how many people commented about how fast the cars are driving on South Greensboro, um, including even at the roundabout. Um, one of the neighbors, I mean, it sort of stood out to me, but she commented that she's right there at the, at the roundabout. She said, there's been three or four cars that have ended up in her front yard, uh, because the cars are going so fast. Um, so, um, under the challenges for South Greensboro Street Sidewalk, um, you know, that was certainly, that's a challenge for the neighbors there is how fast the cars are going. Um, and then the other challenge, um, quite a few people commented about was, you know, the sidewalk, of course, will need to go on the west side. But that means, you know, to go from the library, say to South Green, South Green or to go to Franklin Porter Graham, it's going to mean crossing the street two times. Um, so people talked about trying to put in, uh, crosswalks, um, ideally at old Pittsboro would probably could be a good location, what have you. Uh, but I did want to mention those two things that came up during that public meeting. Um, and you know, it's, it is a reminder, I guess, so many people talking about how fast the cars were going. It's just that um, yet another reminder about the slow zones. And it seems like it's a really natural place with the, you know, already connecting that 20 mile per hour just right on down to the roundabout. Um, if that would be, um, help in terms of lot, we're trying to get more pedestrian traffic there. And so maybe that's all the more reason in terms of keeping the pedestrians, keeping the bicyclists safe. So I just wanted to throw that out there from the public meeting.
Yeah, I was at the Thursday night meeting and I think we heard a lot of those same sorts of comments. We're looking into it a little more closely. I think we were going to try to do some data collection. So see what the speeds actually are and see how we can use that information with our design consultant.
Thank you Zach. That would be, that would be great.
Thank you Zach. Um, okay, let's see. We have a motion and a second and then Barbara, I think had something else she wanted to say here before we?
Yeah, um, so, so thank you Zach. You're good as always. And thank you for all the, the extra information. I think Mary Lovell, um, mentioned about the, the demographics and, and who would be served, uh, where and what project. And I thought along South, South Greensboro where our council member, Romaine was talking about, I thought that was like 20 miles per hour now. Oh, you know how, I'm not even sure how people go fast through there, right? Scared myself. I thought it was already 20 miles per hour. I mean, I don't, I don't know. It just doesn't seem like a place where people should go fast, but.
Well, it isn't where they should, but they do all the time.
Isn't it 20? Isn't it 20 now?
But when's the last time you saw somebody getting pulled and picketed?
Top of the hill, but as he.
Oh, the top of the hill. Okay.
Goes up to 35, yeah.
So, so we need enforcement too.
Exactly.
Or, or revisit it now that we have that roundabout there.
Yeah.
To have 35 all of a sudden, then have the round.
No, it should be 20 all the way.
All the way down.
Yeah, I think so too. I like 20 all the way down, but, um, what, what I wanted to say, um, had to do with a little bit of, of wordsmithing, you know, equity and environmental impacts are, are priorities for the council and the town. So when I see it worded like are being considered or being emphasized, I tend to want to change that to, uh, including implementing or incorporating. So I'm going to ask in, in this attachment A, um, I see where it says while emphasizing the need to consider equity and environmental in, impacts. I, I want, I want to change emphasizing the need to consider. I don't know what council members feel about that, but I feel like, um, you know, we want to have, you know, some stronger, stronger language when we're talking about equity and environmental impacts, no matter what the topic is. I mean, because, you know, those are, are at the top of our list.
Well, I mean, one thing I see here is that's kind of what our boards said, right? Our, our, our tab, our planning board, our EAB, they said emphasizing the need to consider equity and environmental impact. So, so, um, I mean, I.
You could just say emphasizing equity.
Right, take out.
Exactly. Yeah, take out a few words even, but just to make it sound a little bit stronger. That's all. Yeah, thank you.
I'm fine, I'm fine with that.
Friendly amendment Randy and then Barbara, you seconded it anyway. So, okay. All right. So we all good with that? So we're going to take a vote now. All in favor say aye. Randy?
Aye.
Sammy?
Aye.
Me, aye. Susan?
Aye.
Jackie? Barbara?
Aye.
Damon?
Aye.
All right, very good. Um, Zach, thank you so much. That was really clear and helpful and.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
All right. Motion to adjourn, bye.
Oh, sorry, matter by, by a council, uh, member.
Quick Sammy? I'm, I'm sorry. I just, I have to go. But that's the only reason.
It's just be very quick. Um, uh, Chief Schmidt shared that the, uh, the testing by the universities combined with the testing by the county. And I'm just a little concerned about the skewing that's happening because they're, they're doing a, a lot of testing on campus and, um, and we don't really have a sense of what the testing is in the community. And so I'm, I'm requesting our representatives to Mac, David and, and Mayor Lovell, manager and, and our, and our mayor to, um, to check in about getting that corrected because, uh, in a way, we're, we're flying blind with a major metric and it's very significant given that the schools will be opening. And the CDC says that, you know, schools are okay to open if the conditions in the community are okay.
Okay, whatever, whatever this exact question is, because I, I think, I, I, I hear you saying she says they're mixing them up. I don't know about that, but whatever this exact question is, David, can you have Chief Schmidt look into it and get an answer for us for this question?
I can't. Sammy, you want to?
I'll, I'll shoot you an email. He, he basically did answer it, um, but what, the follow-up is, um, we need to know what the, what the positivity rate is in the community because they're mixing.
They're doing so much testing on campus that it could be over emphasizing the negative.
I hear you. Yeah.
Thank you.
You want to segregate UNC from the general community, correct?
Yes, yes.
So, so, so Sammy will email that request to you and you can email it on. The reason I'm saying is I'm, we're not going to meet again for a month. We only meet once a month now. So let's have Chief Schmidt just go ahead and follow up on it with Quintana, like he does all.
Okay, got it. Um, movement, um, motion to adjourn.
All right. Motion to adjourn by Sammy, second by Susan.
Everybody, yep.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.
See y'all.
You too.